Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the November 5th, 2019 Meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
You have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, November 8th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, before we get to the consent calendar, I will say that we will separately read off Items 3, 9, 10, and 20 because we have speaker slips. Madam Clerk.
Okay. So for your Items 1 through 37, I have a couple of notes. For Item 3, you are adopting an ordinance, the Sacramento County Code repealing portions of Chapter 2.96 Title II related to the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission. You waived reading on this on October 22nd. For Item 9, you're also adopting an ordinance amending Chapters 2.1 Title II Section 2.1.17 of the Sacramento County Code relating to miscellaneous registrar of voters fees. You're also adopting an ordinance for Item 10, amending Chapters 2.99.50 and 2.99.60 Title II of the county code relating to the first five Sacramento Commission membership term limits. And for Item 30, you're also adopting an ordinance amending Chapters 6.20 Title VI relating to solid waste management. You waive reading on this on October 22nd. I also have a note for Item 8 to drop board letters #12 for the sheriff, #16 for child, family, and adult services, and #23 for health services. All the other items will remain. And then we also have those four other separate items, and we'll call that at that time.
And I actually have two more to add to that list, #16 and #17, we will also separately hear. Any more members of the board have comment? Mr. Natoli.
Just on Item 7, if I could, real quickly.
Item 7 is the contract for the County of Sacramento Library Facility Master Plan approved the agreement with Group 4 Architecture, Research, and Planning Incorporated in the amount of $287,900 for the development of a library facility master plan.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. I spoke with Nav Gill, County Executive, and he got back to me this morning. But my concern here was is that this contract goes through March of 2021. We actually approved this in a budget year, a year ago, and I know this contract is coming to us. And my concern is, is that in the scope of work and the plan of action here, it doesn't detail any milestone timelines. Nav has assured me that, and I'll let him speak to it, that they're going to be reporting back to the board relative timelines. This needs to get to us a lot sooner than March of 2021 as being the outside date. I think there's an imperative here as it relates to some of our libraries and improvements and a consideration before this board, and I would hope that folks agree that we need to see this sooner rather than later, so.
That's correct, Supervisor Natoli. We will do a communication to the board on what the timeframe and what dates we anticipate to be back in front of the board with the product.
Okay. Any idea where we would land with this?
I do not have a specific date, but I think once we have this contract in place, our job number one will be set down, come up with the timelines on.
Okay. We tell the consultants, March of 2020 looks real good, so they can work real hard and quick.
We will pass that along.
Okay, thanks.
Just a little bit of community outreach in there, but we'll get there.
Okay, well, Rob can ride herd on it, so, okay? Good, thanks. All right. Mr. Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a comment on Item 2.
Okay. Item 2 is the adoption of the 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting calendar.
I just wanted to thank the county CEO for working with me as vice chair this year, and presumably I'll serve as chair next year. But this is going to be a bit of a departure in terms of our formal calendar set out for the year in advance. As was noted today, I think it's in the digital version of the Sacramento B., we are looking to have at least four scheduled Board of Supervisors hearings that will commence with timed items that will be heard in the evening. I know I have heard from a number of my constituents over the past several years, and perhaps others on this board have as well, that because we are charged with hearing so many items, we have such a full day that begins at 9:30 AM and can go as late as 11:00 PM sometimes. It's infrequent, but it happens, that folks that are attending school or working don't have the chance to come down and petition their county government and the Board of Supervisors on issues that they care about. So this is going to be an attempt, should it pass with consent this morning, to broaden the time that we will be accessible and the public will have to come and, again, interface with their Board of Supervisors. And again, I want to thank the county CEO's office for helping us get to a place where I think we achieve that.
Thank you. Ms. Peters.
Can I ask how you'd like to handle this, because I'm going to pull Item 2.
Okay, then we'll just pull it. We'll hear it separately.
Okay.
Ms. Frost.
I was just going to ask the second.
Okay. All right, so we will hear 3, 9, 10, 20, 16, 17, and 2. Nicely done, Mr. Gill, on the consent calendar this week.
Thank you.
It is not done until it's fully cooked, so here we go.
So, Mr. Rodriguez, you have cards in for 3, 9, 10, 20. I will have the clerk call those, and then I will give you five minutes to speak on those items. Madam Clerk, please read those into the record.
I'll read all four. Item 3 is the adoption of the ordinance repealing portions of Chapter 2.96 Title II related to the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission. And then, Item 9 is the adoption of the ordinance amending Chapter 2.01 Title II Section 2.1.17 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the miscellaneous registrar of voter fees. And then for 10, it's also another adoption of the ordinance amending Chapters 2.99.50 and 2.99.60, and this is relating to the first five Sacramento Commission membership term limits. And then for 17 is the authority to-
Actually, 20.
20, okay, sorry about that. 20 is authorization to execute a data sharing and reimbursement agreement with the State of California Employment Development Department for the period of January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2022, in the amount of $15,276.
Thank you. So we have those four items. Davi Rodriguez, if you're here, please come to the podium, and I will give you five minutes to address all four of those at one time.
Thank you. It is Davi. Everybody calls me Davy. That's the way it's spelled.
Thank you.
I'm going to go in reverse order because this is the one that's more important to me, and that is #20 on that contract with the EDD. Till I read this, I had no idea that this was even possible. It allows the sheriff to search the EDD records, and it appears to me, on its face, to be a broad warrantless search. There is nothing in there that requires them to have a warrant. It's just that you ask the information. Under certain guidelines, they give it to you. Now, this is people's, working people's information out there. They not necessarily have done anything or will do anything, but all that information he's asking and you're willing to give them the money to do this, I guess that's a, who stands up and says, "For us"? I mean, I expect this from the sheriff. I expect him to ask for information. What I also expect is somebody to protect us. There is the Fourth Amendment that should be mentioned in this thing, and it isn't. He's allowed to take up to 1 million records, and that's at a time, not a limit of 1 million. That's just 1 million at once. And so there's, what, 60 million people or less here in California, and only about half of them are working that I can see, 30 requests, and he's got every working person's address and their employer. When you sign up to get a job, I don't see where anywhere where you're surrendering your Fourth Amendment rights there. There should be something said about that. I realize now that the unemployment code, which I haven't got to, I read all the codes. You know, I started from the beginning and worked my way, but I haven't reached the unemployment code yet. I thought that was kind of a trivial one for me, but now I see it's quite important. So somebody should question, you know, whether anybody, you know, the individual working person's rights are being protected here. You in this country illegally, you're not supposed to work. They'll bend over backwards to make sure that you're protected. You have a lawyer present when the cops are there. All the records that they want are scrutinized and severely restricted now. You're a working person, they're saying, "Oh, yeah, no problem, just give him what he wants."
You're halfway through your time, Mr. Rodriguez.
I see that. I said this was important to me, okay?
I agree.
All right, thank you.
No, no, you can continue. I just wanted to let you know.
All right. Well, okay, I'll quit there. On the first five, you're asking to extend the terms of these people and make a public term or community seat into one that's basically a non-community seat. And we have very little community representation on that board as it is. Plus, extending the terms make it kind of a thiefdom in a sense. I mean, so I understand it's hard for people to reapply for their positions all the time, but what the heck? It's a job. You live up to the terms, you don't. So I, I don't know, I'd kind of like to see that in the very minimum, to stay like it is and possibly be expanded to include more community representation there. On that voter fees thing, item #9, I see something in there. It's, "So you want to have research done? Costs $110 per hour." Who in the hell down the voter registration branch is making 110 bucks an hour? The cost of these things is supposed to reflect their actual cost. That's a lot if you need to have records researched done, which I do quite often. So, you know, I'd kind of take issue with some of these fees. I don't think they're relative to what they actually cost the county. The last thing is that Metropolitan Arts thing, okay? I do not understand this one. Are we surrendering the county to the cities, giving them the domain and more representation on how that money is spent that is coming into the county? I don't understand, you know, whether we now have to influence people that we don't vote for, which is the city of Sacramento. They're going to be having more power in this and us less? I read that thing through, and honest to God, I do not understand it. So I wish you'd clarify that somehow. And see that, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Gill, you have a response for that?
Yes, I do. I think what this item does, it clarifies that the control comes back to the county. There's a dissolution of SMAC. We are removing any reference to Sacramento Metropolitan Art Commission and City of Sacramento and putting it back with the Board of Supervisors and the county executive.
So our intention is not to diminish our support of the arts?
It is not.
Okay.
All right, appreciate that. I could not get that out of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Chair. Yes, Ms. Natoli.
Yeah, since the issue was raised on Item 20, I just thought it might be helpful for, certainly, I know Mr. Rodriguez has read this and has, certainly has followed our agenda, but, one, this is a renewal of an agreement that's been in place for now three years. I was entered into first, I guess, in 2016. But I wanted to just read what the purpose, the scope of work, since the issue was raised relative to confidentiality and warrantless searches. And obviously, I'm not an expert in that area of law, but if I could just take just a quick moment here, that through this agreement, the Employment Development Department agrees to provide confidential employer address and client address information to the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office. Sacramento County Sheriff's Office agrees to use the EDD confidential information for locating victims, suspects, missing persons, potential witnesses, or persons for whom a felony arrest warrant has been issued when the information is requested in the course of and as a part of an investigation into commission of a crime when there's reasonable suspicion that the crime is a felony and that the information would lead to relevant evidence. And then, secondly, the protection of the confidentiality, both federal-state confidentiality laws, regulations, and administrative policies classify all the EDD information provided in this agreement as confidential. And both federal-state laws prohibit disclosure of the confidential information to the public and mandate its protection against loss or against unauthorized access, use, disclosure, modification, or destruction. And there's a list of administrative safeguards that the sheriff agrees to, the County of Sacramento does, as a part of this agreement. I think it's important to point that out because, again, I think, you know, people's right to privacy, certain their employment status, and information relates to their employers and compensation and any other matters, of course, as it relates to people's personal history needs to be protected. And obviously, there's a pretty limited scope in this regard as relates to access to that information. And as I read it, there's more information, but I want to be sure that was pointed out.
Thank you. Thank you, good points. Any other member of the board? All right, then, would the clerk please read Items 16 and 17, and then we will have Christopher Barton have three minutes to address those two issues.
Okay. For Item 16, this is the authority to enter into single-year expenditure contracts with multi-year contract authority with Telecare Corporation in the amount of $12,765,000 for the term beginning with board approval through June 30, 2022, for the provision of mental health services to adults living with serious mental health illness who are homeless or at risk of homelessness through the Sacramento Adults Recovering in a Strength-Based Environment Full Service Partnership Program. For Item 17, this is the authority to enter into a single-year expenditure contracts with multi-year contract authority with Turning Point Community Programs in the amount of $10,50,000 for the term beginning with board approval through June 30, 2022, for the provision of mental health services to adults with serious mental health illness who are homeless or at risk of homelessness through the Haven Program.
Thank you, Mr. Barton.
Good afternoon, members of the board.
If you speak between the two, we're going to raise the podium for you here.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Christopher Barton. I've been a consumer for over two decades. I'm a member of the Mental Health Services Exetering Committee in Sacramento County and the Mental Health, the Sacramento County Mental Health Board. I was, used to be get services from Kaiser Permanente years ago. They offered them the most. They were kind of lacking. The first agency that ever really impacted me was Telecare Corporation, SOAR, in SAC County when I was conserved years ago. I was home, I wasn't homeless, but I avoided homelessness by living in abortion care in the South Area operated by Herman Inkerwing. While at Telecare, they offered programs that really impacted me, such as DBT, Dialectical Behavioral Therapy, RAP Wellness Recovery Action Plan, which is started by Mary Ellen Copeland. However, the impact that really affected me the most at Telecare was facilitated by La Guana Bosley, which is Job Ready. I got involved with YJU, which is Workforce Integration Support Education, which is facilitated by, used to be called NorCalMJA, which is now CalVoices. While that, I got employment, so I got to work for Chick-fil-A for a year and a half. I was employee of the month. Then I got to, I got to pursue the job I really enjoyed the most, which was working for Turning Point Community Programs and the Crisis Residential Program, Henrietta, which actually impacts people right when they come out of a mental hospital, when they're at their most fragile or their most urgent need of care. Homelessness is always an aspect that they always talk about, but Henrietta was only a two-week stay. We would offer programs. So I would just like to just say, these items that you're voting on are very needed. The monies sound big, but they really do impact. For me personally, I did lose this summer. It's been a tough summer. I've lost my house because of mistakes I made, which were illogical and irrational. For the first time in my two decades, I got off my medication. It affected me. I lost my condo. I lost my subsequent job. I lost my car. Now I find myself back in another room and board operated by the same guy that operated the first board in care when I was conserved. I'm turning my life around thanks to a different agency called T-Cor, which is under the cooperative TLCS. I'd just like to say, mental health is very prevalent in this community, and I just would like to recommend usually a vote to support both Telecare and Turning Point Community Programs. Thank you for your time, and have a good day.
Mr. Barton, I want to say thank you for being here today, and thank you for sharing your story. That takes a lot of courage and commitment, and we really appreciate it. And I also will say, Henrietta is in the district I represent and is really a model for what the rest of the county could do. So thank you for being here. Thanks, Christopher. All right, now we'll hear Item #2.
Item 2 is the adoption of the 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting calendar.
And is there a board member?
Yes.
Ms. Peters.
Thank you. I am not in agreement with this item, and I think the board has, and I think the Board of Supervisors has very long meetings, running eight to 10 hours a day on our meeting dates. And I think having night meetings is extremely impractical, where we might be running till midnight or 2:00 in the morning. And also, with set dates like this, we have no idea what the agenda is going forward, so that is also impractical. And I'm, I have some amendments I would like to propose to the calendar. I can go through them one at a time, so the clerk can keep them. I'd like to show that the, changing the time for the meeting of Tuesday, March 24th, to include an afternoon session, and eliminate the meeting of Wednesday, March 25th. I'd like to change the time for the meeting on Wednesday, June 10th, to start at 9:30 instead of 5:00 PM. Change the time of the meeting on Tuesday, September 22nd, to include an afternoon session and eliminate the meeting of Wednesday, September 23rd. And changing the time of the meeting of Tuesday, November 17th, to include an afternoon session and eliminate the meeting on November 18th. I've had no call for this from my constituency to change these dates. And in fact, when we have meetings that run late at night, usually everyone has to leave to go home, to go to bed, and get to work the next morning. They leave at 8:00 in the morning, I mean, 8:00 PM, that kind of thing. So I, the county is a very different organization than the cities with a much longer agenda, and I think it is best for the citizens of the county to have the meetings during the day.
Thank you. So is that a motion?
So that's my motion.
That's a motion. Is there a second to that motion before we go down the line with?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Supervisor Frost.
I just want to say that it's challenging for me. It's not so much, I understand maybe in your situation, Supervisor Serna, that your constituents may call, ask for evening meetings. My constituents do not. They have not in the, I represent the outlying areas. Having evening meetings for me doesn't, it doesn't make a huge difference, except that I'm out almost every night in the community, so it takes me from a community meeting that I probably would be at, or maybe one of those rare evenings when I would be at home. But mostly, it just, it seems difficult to have, to have a morning meeting and then come back the next day for a meeting that goes from 5 to who knows how late. Our meetings oftentimes go late, and so I kind of agree. I think it's difficult. It makes it harder. And the other thing is, it's costly to have employees come in in the evening. They're generally working during the day, so that's an added cost for the budget. And other counties, when you look around, do not have evening meetings. They do generally do their business during the day. So for me, it would work better to have it during the day if that's what the council agrees to do.
The board. I mean, what the board agrees to do.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. While I respect my colleagues' positions, I respectfully disagree with them, and I disagree with them strongly because, again, I've heard from my constituents, not just recently, but over the course of years since I've been on this board, that it would not be unreasonable, and I tend to agree with them, to have a few of these meetings that are scheduled for the evening. And in fact, what we're talking about is four meetings out of the course of the year, and I'm not sure how many meetings, Madam Clerk, that we have in the course of a year, but it's several. So I think it's a modest approach. And with regards to not knowing what the agenda might be for those dates where we have meetings that would start at 5:00 PM, I think we have it well in our capability to carefully plan agendas in advance so that there are items that perhaps would draw more attendance and more interest in addressing the board for those designated dates. It's not brain surgery. So, again, I feel very strongly about this. I think it advances the democratic process, quite frankly, for how residents of Sacramento County can and should petition their Board of Supervisors and have every opportunity to do that. I think keeping the meeting schedule as is, as long as the meetings are, we know for a fact, we've actually heard, all five of us have heard at the same time, many accounts in these chambers where people have commented after the fact that they would have liked to have testified at a hearing, but they had to work or they were attending school, had other daytime commitments. So, again, there was a lot of forethought that went into this recommendation from staff in terms of the number of meetings, the fact that one is designated for what I would say is the most important job we have every year, which is consideration of our budget. And of all the issues that we routinely, that we have, we can anticipate every year, it's our budget that should be the most welcoming to the public to contribute their thoughts. So again, with that, I'm going to suggest a substitute motion in support of staff recommendation. I will look for a second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Yes, I would second.
A second from Supervisor Natoli, and Supervisor Natoli wants to speak.
Yeah, I wanted to speak to the item, and certainly I'd support the substitute motion. But, again, thinking back how our board calendar has evolved over the years, there was a time, certainly preceded incorporations of three cities in this county, so the land use calendar was a very heavy one, but where we would regularly have a Wednesday night meeting, and a lot of that was devoted to land use, sometimes substantive policy matters that related to county ordinances where it would be difficult for folks to access us during the day. And from time to time, during some of the budget stress periods, we would have a budget discussion as well. I know this next year, we anticipate some land use items of major consequence along the Jackson Corridor are coming to this board. I had the occasion to sit through the Planning Commission meeting the other evening, and it was a fairly lengthy one. But my point being is that it may be convenient for some folks to access our meetings during the day, again, if it's only sporadic. But I would just say that those land use items in particular are ones that I believe need to have a session during the evening, when folks can get here after work or plan accordingly, you know, to begin in the late afternoon, early evening. And we certainly have the ability to, you know, working through the clerk and through the chair's office respectively, and certainly the county executive to set the calendar and the agenda. And so I think in addition to some of the comments relative to budget, I think it's important, certainly in the upcoming year, but maybe for the next year or two, particularly when it comes to the land use considerations. Those are major policy decisions by this board. We're talking about tens of thousands of residential units. We're talking about implications in our transportation system. We're talking about impacts to neighborhoods and communities in areas in the southeastern portion of this county. And I guess I would just, you know, we'd be very emphatic in my support for this as it relates to those items, and I think, you know, we know there's some budget stressors that would, I think, would allow folks to come here. We're not the city council or a city council, but I think having, you know, three or four meetings in the course of a year, again, our calendars obviously are crowded, and I respect that for all of us. But, you know, this is the business we're elected to do when we sit in session, we do the people's work and business here, and I'm very supportive of having the night sessions. And if there's an occasion we don't need to, we always have the ability not to use it. But I think setting the calendar, we work our schedules around that. And I think it's important for a variety of considerations to have those night meetings. We evolved over time with workload to go to an, every other week, Tuesday meeting, and frequently have Wednesday meetings, and I think having an evening meeting from time to time- to time will improve access for folks and engagement on matters that I believe are very important for the people of this county. So, I support the substitute motion.
Thank you. That's all the members that I have. So, we have a substitute motion and a second on the table, so the clerk can please, please vote. Nope, hang on.
And the motion fails.
Okay, so we'll go to the original motion, which I believe the clerk captured, Ms. Peters.
I did.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And the motion passes.
Thank you, and that was our 37-minute consent calendar.
We still need to take a motion on the balance of the whole.
Okay, thank you very much. Chair will move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's a second.
Unanimous vote. Okay, so for item 38 is the presentation of resolution congratulating Emily Butler for her years of service with the Splash program.
I'd invite Emily to join me at the podium, please.
Well, this is a day where we're going to do a number of recognitions, certainly for our heroes of human service, and get an opportunity to congratulate a lot of folks. But today is also a day we get to recognize another person who I certainly believe, and I think this board is well acquainted with, her work, who has given a lot to this community. And so, I have a board resolution, and typically I wouldn't read all the whereas's, but I think, certainly in deference to the amount of time that she has devoted and her contributions to this community, I'm going to go through the whereas's, and then I think Emily has a couple of comments she'd like to offer. So, this resolution congratulates Emily Butler on her years of service with the Splash program. And of course, on this day, November the 5th, we are honoring her, and certainly we have a large audience here to honor other folks as well, but we're recognizing her dedicated service over the course of more than a dozen years, and her work with the Splash program. Also, her leadership in work in environmental education and in vernal pool stewardship. Throughout her lifetime, Emily has had a fascination and deep appreciation for the out-of-doors and the amazing critters, big and big as well as very small, which share the world with us humans. And since her early childhood, has nurtured her interest in protecting nature and concentrated her work and passion to advancing the belief that playing, experiencing, and learning about the natural world around us and its awesome wonders is the birthright of every child. Emily's mother, Eva, who's well-known to this board and certainly her work along the same lines, she's been along a champion of environmental stewardship, most assuredly served as a loving mentor and inspired Emily in her pursuit of bringing students and teachers to nature's classroom at Mather, where they can personally, and do every year, experience the treasured vernal pools and the habitat and living creatures which they harbor and support. So, it was more than 13 years ago, having completed her college studies, that Emily accepted the position with the Splash program at Mather, where she would serve as the first executive director. And in the course of her time with Splash, she would oversee the development of new programs in science education and outdoor exploration. Her work included many facets, and just a few are mentioned here, coordinating field trips, growing the Splash Center, and teaming up with teachers and educators throughout the Sacramento region to create a robust, hands-on science program and curriculum entitled, "Life is our watershed investigating vernal pools." Well, excuse me, "Life on the watershed, is on watershed investigating vernal pools." And through it all, she touched the minds and hearts of more than 30,000, and that's not a misprint, 30,000 young people who participated in this awesome and amazing adventure with nature. Emily's efforts were a catalyst for bringing together university professionals, ecologists, environmental experts, parents, teachers, and of course, students, for a common purpose, to help people of all ages and from all walks of life experience and grow in their understanding of the tremendous value and importance of appreciating and protecting our natural world. And through her time at Splash, Emily, she's brought that to a close, obviously, and she's taking a well-deserved respite to devote more time to her family. But she's undoubtedly helped position Splash to continue to excel in its mission to someday realize the development of an environmental education center at Mather, which will further complement the outdoor classroom, which because of her strong advocacy and alliance with community members will forever include the protection of more than 1,300 acres of vernal pool habitat, including the critter and now famous spade foot pools, and all the creatures which call them home. So, now therefore be resolved as the Board of Supervisors. Does hereby extend to Emily, it's a sincere thanks and appreciation for her numerous contributions to the betterment of our community. And further, we offer heartfelt wishes, best wishes to Emily and her family for much happiness, good health, and many blessings in future years, and hopefully, from time to time, an occasional springtime visit to the vernal pools, where students and nature will thrive and prosper because of her commitment and legacy of seeking to protect and preserve this precious and wonderful landscape for the benefit of all the generations to come. So, Emily, we say congratulations, thank you for all your good work, and I know you've got more that you're still going to accomplish in your life, but we thank you for all your good work.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you so much. As you know, my name is Emily Butler, and I am the former executive director of Sacramento Splash. I spent 13 years of my life working to bring local kids out to explore and learn science at the Splash's outdoor classroom at Mather Field. It means a lot to me that you're taking the time today to honor my contribution. Thank you. To me, Splash is emblematic of the tremendous power of public-private partnerships. 20 years ago, the county, the city of Sacramento, and regional SAN united under the visionary leadership of then-district engineer Bob Shanks. By pooling agency resources and engaging local scientists and educators, you created a watershed education program that moved far beyond mere regulatory compliance. You created something of real value that has brought joy and knowledge to more than 30,000 local children and their families. I saw more evidence of the power of public-private partnership in the excellent work done by the Mather Stakeholders Group under the leadership of county planning and supervisor Natoli. Together with the Lewis Group, they committed to a transparent collaborative process that listened deeply to community voices and ultimately resulted in a better development plan for both the surrounding habitat and the current and future residents of Mather Field. With that said, in this my final address to you, I feel a moral obligation to inform you that the work remains unfinished. After resolving the issues related to Mather South, the Mather Stakeholders Group never met again. Unaddressed community requests include a transparent finance plan for the endowment of the vernal pool preserve, and the creation of a technical advisory committee to harness local scientific expertise and volunteer resources. On these and a few other critical issues, no progress was made. Collectively, the Mather Stakeholders devoted thousands of hours of volunteer time to create a win-win-win for the county, the vernal pools, and future generations. That effort was met with resistance and resentment by key players in the county. I do not say this to you as a representative of Splash. I've been gone for four months, and nobody other than myself knew what I planned to say here today. I say this to you as a concerned citizen. I have had a front row seat to watch what I and others perceive as the county's waning commitment to meaningful public engagement. You can do everything by the book and check all of the boxes, but unless upper management fosters a culture of respect for community voices and encourages staff to actively engage them in co-creating a better future, the county's decision-making will represent its own interests, not those of the people. I have the deepest respect for this board, and I am truly grateful for the honor you've bestowed upon me today. That is why, even though it may seem odd, I feel an obligation to share these parting thoughts with you. If I did not, I would not be a community leader worthy of this honoring. Thank you for your time, for this kind resolution, and for your undying commitment to the people and natural resources of Sacramento County. Thank you.
Emily, 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 don't go away yet.
I'm sorry.
You gave it to us, we give it to give it to you now. I would have been disappointed had you not kicked us in the butt on your way out the door. I just want to thank you so much for everything you've done at Splash, and on behalf of a whole bunch of 4th, 5th, and 6th special ed. students who I think you know, I just want to say that you've been a tremendous leader in the community, and the work that you've done out at Splash has really benefited not just Sacramento County, but individual students, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Serna.
Thank you. So, I too wanted to personally congratulate you, Emily, and I've had the good fortune of being out at Splash a few times. In one case, we went out with a group of students and got our feet muddy, and got to see all that the Splash program offers. But what I wanted to add to the words that Supervisor Natoli and Mr. Kennedy have issued so far, it's not just what you've been advocating for, it's been how you've advocated for it that has really been very impressive. We have, we're blessed here in Sacramento and our region, in this county, to have a number of people that are dedicated to all kinds of aspects of how best to provide augmented educational opportunities to our youngest constituents. But I think, especially during the challenging times, you've been very, very thoughtful about how to help us, and working in partnership, find the resources to help continue programming when it was very difficult to try and balance the needs, other needs here in this county. And I think in those instances, you are always very respectful, you are, again, I think, always very practical. You know, you may not think of yourself as a politician, but I think you're a politician, a pretty good one. So, I just wanted to add those few words to what's in the resolution and what's been said so far, so thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
And I don't suggest you move into District 2 anytime soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item 39 is the presentation of resolution proclaiming November 4th, 2019 through November 8th, 2019 as Human Services Professionals Appreciation Week.
Ms. Edwards. Morning.
Anne Edwards, Department of Human Assistance. And as we are acknowledging folks today, it is my great pleasure to be here in honor of Human Services Professionals Week. I want to take this opportunity to really acknowledge the work that human service professionals do. They work tirelessly, day in, day out, serving our community, the members in our community who need our services the most, people who are hungry, in need of medical care, who are in need of some assistance while looking for work. And they do this with our DHA city values, compassion, integrity, trust, and innovation. So, as we recognize them for their dedication, I am honored to present this resolution to Shaheed Mohammed, or Mo, who is Vice President of the Sacramento Valley Chapter of New Paths, proclaiming this week as Human Services Professionals Week. Thank you, Mo. And then we also have Carmen Briscoe, Program Manager, with us today. Really want to thank you and Carmen and all of the staff for the amazing work that you do each and every day.
Good morning. My name is Shaheed Mohammed, and I'm with DHA. I'm the Vice President of New Paths in Sacramento Valley. New Paths stands for National Eligibility Workers, Professionals Associated Through Human Services. The purpose of New Paths is to improve the knowledge, skills, and overall professionalism of eligibility practitioners by providing information, training, and network of services to support them. Sacramento Valley Chapter holds two trainings a year, not only to help improve program knowledge for our human service workers, but also personal knowledge, which then in turn helps us serve the community. We are also involved with the community by providing scholarships, and I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing the hard work that the human service workers are doing and proclaiming this week Human Services Professional Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Thank you. So, on behalf of the board, I will say that, you know, you guys are why we do what we do, and you quietly do it, you get the job done, you serve the people of Sacramento County, and we take the credit. So, I just want to say thank you so much for all the work, and that's to every one of you.
Item 40 is the presentation of resolution in recognition of the 2019 Heroes of Human Services Award recipients.
Ms. Callejas. And let me say that it's you people that really do the work in Sacramento County, not any...
Thank you. Good morning. Michelle Callejas, Director of the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services. And I think I swing around, right, to face the audience, so...
That would be appropriate.
I'm swinging right now. Good morning, everybody. How's everyone doing? Good. So, welcome to the 13th Annual Heroes of Human Services Awards. So, this award ceremony is presented by our Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and our Sacramento County Human Services Coordinating Council. Today, you're going to hear about some amazing people doing extraordinary work in communities throughout our county. They're addressing issues such as child abuse and neglect, HIV, Parkinson's, mental health, suicide prevention, youth, and other mentoring programs, and so many other services and supports that uplift community members in our region. So, it's going to be an exciting day, and I guarantee that you will leave here more inspired. So, we're going to try to make this go as smoothly as possible. And so, what I'm going to do is introduce each supervisor by their district, and I'll just list the names of the recipients. The supervisor will then come up and call the heroes within their district forward, and they will say a little bit more about the great work that is being done throughout the county. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
All right, excellent. Okay, first, I would like to ask Supervisor Serna to come to the podium, and he will talk about Dr. Michelle Evans and Dr. Dorothy Wilborn from Kaiser Permanente, as well as Melissa Tafoya from Rocksteady Boxing Sacramento.
Thank you, Michelle. So, as Michelle mentioned, this is a special day. We have it each year, rightfully so, to recognize the people in our community that really do tremendous work. And I just want to say a few words before I introduce the first honoree for District 1. But it really is the work that the people that we're honoring today do, day in and day out, that really makes county governance so much different than municipal governance. Not to dismiss what our friends at local city councils do and their staffs, but if you look at what Sacramento County is charged with, along with the other 57 counties in the state of California, it is human services that really represents the most intimate levels of governance and service delivery. And so, that's why it's especially rewarding for me, and I know for my colleagues each year, to make sure that we honor the people that are doing such terrific work in that regard. So, the first two honorees for District 1 are Dr. Michelle Evans and Dr. Dorothy Wilborn. If they could join me down here, please. So, Dr. Evans and Dr. Wilborn are both with Kaiser Permanente. Give me your resolutions here. And the work that they do, and I'm going to certainly give them an opportunity to speak to it as well, but the work they do is critically important in terms of the relationship that we have in our region with our health systems and with our child protective services work that we do here in Sacramento County, in terms of making sure that the reporting that goes on when there's suspected child abuse and neglect in our emergency rooms, at our hospitals, is reported in a way that is professional, but is also very compassionate and aware of the situation in which they present. So, instead of reading all the whereas's, I think it's probably best that we actually hear from the honorees about their tremendous work, but I wanted to say on behalf of my district, District 1, and the people of District 1, I really, really want to thank you for your terrific work, and hope to see you continue years into the future. So, the... So the floor is yours.
We would like to thank the board for this recognition and just acknowledge that addressing child maltreatment is difficult, and the efforts to reduce child maltreatment in a community cannot be carried out by just one organization. And so we are really grateful for the partnerships that we've had with child welfare, particularly Michelle Callejas, thank you, with the Child Abuse Prevention Council of Sacramento, as well as with law enforcement. And we'd also like to thank our Kaiser Permanente leadership and colleagues for their support and encouragement as we have developed this program. Additionally, we'd like to thank our family, particularly, I'd like to thank my husband for his support and encouragement as we do this work that's ongoing.
I too am very grateful for this recognition by the Board of Supervisors. The work that we do requires so much dedication and teamwork, and it really is the responsibility of the entire community to work together, and we recognize that. And we are grateful for the Kaiser Permanente leadership for supporting innovation and the creativity that's required, the thinking outside of the box, the many times that Dr. Evans and I worked together outside of our regular clinic hours. That is what we are passionate about, and that's what we're committed to in order to make a difference for children in the Sacramento community and beyond. Thank you.
It's my pleasure to invite Melissa Tafoya to the podium, please. Melissa? So, are you okay? So, here, you want you to stand over here. There we go. I just don't want you to fall, that would be bad form here. So Melissa Tafoya is someone who represents innovation. Those are my words, it's not necessarily in the resolution. And that's one of the things that we want to recognize with these annual Heroes of Human Service Awards. And the innovation that I really take from understanding her service here in the community is that she's found a really fascinating way to help folks with Parkinson's disease. And again, she'll have the opportunity to speak to it in greater detail, but in a nutshell, she is a coach in boxing and uses boxing as a way to really help with Parkinson's patients in terms of their motor skills. And so again, it's one of those things, and we're considering who to honor each year, and that's always a very, very tough decision because we have a great many nominees and people to consider. But it really is, innovation is one of those factors that we're looking for. And so that's the spirit in which I'd like to offer this resolution honoring Melissa Tafoya as a 2019 Hero of Human Service for District 1.
I'm going to keep this short, like me. I can't take all of the credit at all. This is an affiliate program, there's over 800 Rocksteady Boxing programs or affiliations worldwide. I'm honored enough to represent Sacramento, and I can say very easily, I found my tribe. If you don't know Parkinson's, every case is different. Everybody's journey is uniquely different. And what it takes for our guys to come to class, to improve their lives, to want something better, and to belong to something bigger than themselves is extraordinary. I mean, it's a privilege and an honor to know every single person in our program. It's even more extraordinary to know their caregivers and what their family does just to get them there. And all I need to say is if you look in this sea of blue right here, this is not only my tribe, but this represents power, the belief to do better, to be bigger than ourselves. And it's never been more extraordinary in my life to be a part of something that continues to grow, to create more purpose and power and might than I could ever believe in. And until the day I die, I'm going to fight for them. And I just love them with all of my heart. So, thank you.
Melissa, Melissa, is it boxing or kickboxing? And for District 2, I am proud to have two recipients of the Heroes of Human Service Awards, the first being Golden Rule Services. Is there a representative from Golden Rule Services here? All right. So Golden Rule Services was founded by Clamundo Sullivan in January 2000. It originally sought to address a gap in the provision of culturally competent services to persons of color, communities in Sacramento County, especially LGBTIQ, with an initial programmatic focus on criminal justice disparities and addressing the needs of high-risk youth through, among other means, classroom instruction, mentoring, and counseling. Now, I think at this point in our existence in California, we take a lot of things for granted. But, you know, we would not be where we are without people like yourselves. It's easy to look at our nation, and it's fractured in many ways, but we here in this community have stood strongly behind people in the need that you have been fighting for for all these decades. So I want to thank you so much for everything that you do for our community and give you the podium.
Okay, thank, can everybody hear me okay? Yeah, hi, I'm Clamundo Sullivan. I am the Executive Director and Founder of Golden Rule Services here in Sacramento. I just want to say, after 20 years of fighting HIV in Sacramento, there's good news and there's bad news. The good news is that our doors are still open, so we're committed to continuing the hard work of fighting HIV in Sacramento County. The good news also is that we have a Sacramento Getting to Zero Plan that we are working really hard on with the state of California. They're working on a Getting to Zero Plan. That would mean zero new HIV infections. Everybody say zero!
Zero!
Zero new HIV infections is possible in Sacramento County. And so after doing this work for 30 years, I've had some friends and board members and other folks support this work that we're trying to do. We really want to make a difference in Sacramento County. So I'm really, really honored and thrilled. This is my first award from the Board of Supervisors after 20 years of doing this work. So I'm really, really humbled, I'm really, really thrilled, and we're having a 20th Year Anniversary Jubilee in February, so I'll be sending you an invitation. Thank you, everybody, thank you.
And we'll see you next year. Thank you. Next, I'd like to call forward Peggy Delgado-Fava. Peggy, are you here? There you are. So Peggy Delgado-Fava founded Bridge Network in 2011 and dedicated it to uplift marginalized youth and connect with them with vital services and resources. The work that Peggy has done and her organization has done have really changed countless lives. And it's one of those things that when you do what you do, you don't always see the immediate payoff. But I can tell you, and I've talked to people who have been supported by your services, that you have changed lives, one at a time, and you're a tremendous member of the Sacramento County Community, particularly District 2. So congratulations and thank you.
Well, thank you Chairman Kennedy. I am honored to receive this resolution. Today was a conflicted day because I am a people person. I don't like receiving awards. I have a 14-year-old girl at court that we're supposed to be advocating for. She was shipped out to Stockton in a foster situation, being exploited, and she's the one, the few, that I'm now taking under my wing because I've had to delegate those types of services. But that's why I got in this business. So I said, well, I should really be over there. But I have good staff, and they're handling it, but that's really what it's all about, is just saying yes, being available, and pouring into people individually, the people that you work with, the people in your neighborhood, in your communities, your churches. And so that is, when I see this, I go, that's ultimately what I'm doing. And it's not me. I want to give credit to my Lord Jesus Christ, my Savior, and God, who directed me to do this type of work. So I'm just being obedient, I'm no different than anyone else. We all can make an impact, and we are very volunteer-led, so it's through people volunteering their time. So I'm one of many soldiers out there. But there's a huge need for youth development and programs. It's all about human services and human connection. Our youth today are two-dimensional because it's all about the phones and they're losing the connection. And so that's what we really provide, is connection, a safe place, and inspiration. And yes, you don't always see the fruit of your labor, but it does pay out because that was me many, many years ago, trying to run away from Sacramento and my roots, and then coming back and saying, I'm going to come back and be that person I needed when I was a youth. So I want to thank you all, and thank you for putting this out.
My first person is Dorothy Kabody. Ask you to come forward, stand next to me.
I'm Susan.
It's so nice to see you.
We're going to our club.
Dorothy is, for more than 60 years, has been helping and caring for others as a member of the Orangeville Women's Club and reflects the importance we all place on serving humanity. What did you do? Make them laugh.
Sixty years in my club.
She first became volunteering in 1959 as a member of the Orangeville Women's Club, working to improve our community through various endeavors like planting trees in parks, serving seniors, and helping children. And for the last seven years, she has focused her attention to the needs of children under the care of the Sacramento Children's Receiving Home with the help of the Orangeville Women's Club. Dorothy is a resident of Fair Oaks, and I'm told that you are 100 years old?
I'm going on three in December.
Almost 103 years old. So as you can tell, she has no interest in slowing down. And I have a resolution for you, but would you like to say a few words?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you would? Okay, great. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, you know, anybody that says, "I'm bored, there's nothing to do," uh-uh. There is so much volunteer work out there. And when I hear somebody say, "I'm bored," I have no use for. There are so many, there are so many things that have to be done in the community. And Sue, we're so glad you're our supervisor.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you're in the district.
We enjoy them. And the Children's Receiving Home has been just wonderful for me. Our Women's Club, twice a year, I call up the Children's Receiving Home to find out what they need. And our members in April and Christmas come through with whatever these children need. And it's just, it's just a blessing to see their little faces light up. It's a wonderful experience. And if you have nothing to do, there's some volunteer work out there for you.
Thank you. Come around for us. Hi Marilyn, come stand right here.
Senior citizens.
At 81, she's a spring chicken compared to. Dorothy.
I'm going with her.
Go find out what she eats for lunch. Marilyn has been serving as the Volunteer Executive Director for Friends of Survival for the last 36 years, caring for others and reflecting the importance of all we place on serving humanity. Marilyn has never once sought compensation from the nonprofit Friends of Survival, which provides compassion to those who've lost a loved one to suicide. Marilyn, at age 81, has shown no interest in slowing down also, in supporting Friends of Survival and expanding the organization's services to individuals and families in need. Marilyn is an inspiration due to her knowledge, insight, and empathy through demonstration of compassion, understanding, and comfort. So we have this lovely resolution for you, and would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely.
Yes. You think I'm going to let all those other people get on the microphone too? Anyway, I didn't even know I was going to say things this morning, but I am delighted to be here, and it is an honor to be recognized by the County Board of Supervisors for what we've been doing for over 36 years. This didn't tell you what we really do, and we have a name that doesn't tell you what we do on purpose because we want you to ask. We are called Friends for Survival. Friends for Survival is a bereavement support program after a suicide death. My son, Steven, died by suicide when he was a senior at Christian Brothers in 1977. I had a good four years to cry every day, and then I met another mother who had also lost her 17-year-old son to suicide, and she and I started looking at each other and saying- And she and I started looking at each other and saying, where do people go to get some help? We were doing pretty well at that point for ourselves, but we knew that it is a traumatizing, traumatizing, scary, scary, scary time, horrendous. It's ugly, it's horrific, it's violent. And yet, where do we go to talk to people that can understand how awful it really is? So at this point, we get calls nationally, not just from Sacramento County. We work very closely with the law enforcement chaplaincy, Mindy Russell, and a lot of other first responders. In fact, we just designed a new resource, a printed resource, for first responders to leave at a home when they walk out the door and the family, friends are saying, now, what do I do? So we continue to increase our resources. We have seven meetings a month, all the way from Chico down to Modesto. We've got one starting in Ronert Park next year and probably Stockton, all facilitated by volunteers. So our volunteer base is really, really important. We only have two part-time staff people dedicated, and they're here today. And I'm delighted that they drove me downtown.
A little confusing, isn't it?
Yeah. Actually, it's a very happy office because we see people that get better and start smiling again and are losing their fear of having another suicide death in their family or friends because they are at a high risk. A little bit of information that I think is important that people don't focus on is four out of five suicide deaths, not just Sacramento County, but nationally, for years and years, four out of five suicide deaths are males. So we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of widows and a lot of parents and a lot of fatherless children that we have to serve. And we have a variety of services. And I think that's probably enough, enough so you'll now know. We have brochures and be very happy to talk to you. Feel free to call us. We have people that answer the phone seven days a week, okay? Thank you so much for this award.
You drove her down here.
Deserved to have a picture taken. Carol Watts, if you'd come down, please. So Carol has, for more than half a century, been helping and caring for others, reflecting the importance we all place on serving humanity. Carol Watts has volunteered over the years, raising community awareness about crime and public safety within her neighborhood of New Foothill Farms and its local schools. And that's where I met her, was when we were working in New Foothill Farms. And she's always first there, organizing the meeting, the community meetings. The National Night Out is a sight to behold. She gets all kinds of people out and there's a big potluck and everybody gets to meet each other. It's wonderful. And it really helps maintain the bond between law enforcement and the community. And so I wanted to make sure we recognize you and your efforts. You're doing wonderful things for your community and helping whoever represents you on the Board of Supervisors to know what's going on in New Foothill Farms. So if you, you want to say a few words?
Very few.
Okay, all right.
I just want to thank the board and everybody for this recognition and for the community, working really hard to get our community together. We started with the Neighborhood Watch and then it's got into Neighborhood Meetings and then the Night Out. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So as Supervisor Frost makes her way to the podium, I do have a card for Liz Blum on item 42. I just wanted to let Liz know that that item's going to be heard at 2:45, not the originally scheduled 11, just so you're aware. Supervisor Frost.
Good morning. I'd like to invite Judy Alexander to the podium. Good morning, Judy. You know, Hero of Human Services is all about those individuals who have not only touched lives, but these are people who just, whenever you need them, they're there. And you can call on them and they just continue to give in different ways that they just become a true inspiration to the whole community. And Judy is one of those folks. Judy Alexander is one of the founding members of the Folsom Heart and is currently serving in the Winter Sanctuary as a coordinator. She works seven nights a week during the shelter season to make sure that all the volunteer slots are filled and that clients are successfully processed through intake to transport them to the host facility. Judy has a senior leadership role in the day-to-day running of the winter shelter. And as a veteran business executive, her leadership has really contributed a lot to the success and the overall programs that they're offering in Folsom. As a volunteer with Heart, she works with the homeless outreach navigator and mentors homeless of Folsom while working closely with the Folsom Police Department and the city administration. And as a friend and leader as well, she's a talented communicator, organizer. She has empathy. And I have heard so much about your work, Judy, from so many people. I want to thank you for your contribution to the community. And I have a beautiful resolution for you and wonder if you'd like to say a couple words.
Thank you. Well, this is very humbling to be here and very moving. Heart of Folsom is the homeless assistance resource team. We work in conjunction with the city of Folsom, with the faith-based communities of Folsom, and also with other nonprofits and merchants within the city. The organization is fairly young. This will be our third winter shelter. We run 12 weeks and it's all volunteers. And I got to tell you, when I first said, "I want to do the shelter," I took a deep breath. And as the vision of this caught on in Folsom, it was like there was a whole community just waiting for somebody to get it together so they could volunteer. And I have been so supported by the citizens of Folsom. We recognize that everyone matters, absolutely. And some of us are more blessed than others with less trauma in our lives. So we are there to support those veterans, those people who have had medical issues, those people who have not had a good family, as a model for being a good citizen. So we are anxious to start the new shelter on December the 15th. We are very supported by Sacramento Self-Help Housing. And there are now eight Heart organizations within the county of Sacramento, working on basically the same model, tweaked a little depending upon our individual cities. But it's a completely volunteer organization and it's just good to feel like a community to all of our citizens.
Thank you, Judy. Next, I'd like to invite Jason Green to the podium. Oh, hi, Jason. Jason Green is a longtime volunteer in Rio Linda, Alberta, and he's the president of the Historical Society there. He works in a lot of different areas. He's a member of the Rio Linda Grange and serves on the Board of Directors for the Community Water District. He's volunteered his time and expertise as an electrician, acquiring light fixtures, installing them in the Dry Creek Ranch House at the Rio Linda Grange and Rio Linda, Alberta Food Closet, as well as the Firehouse Museum. And he assists with the American Legion and their annual swap meet and car show, and was instrumental in starting the pumpkin patch in Rio Linda Grange, which evolved into a community-growing giant pumpkins and entering them into the Elk Grove Pumpkin Festival and the First Growers Forum. Now, I can testify personally how inspiring Jason is because he inspired me to try to grow giant pumpkins. And I wasn't quite as successful as he was. I think it was because of technology. I used the excuse that I just didn't have time to water it. But Jason uses a program on his phone to water his giant pumpkin three times a day from wherever he is in California. So he doesn't even have to be there to manage his farm. And this year, he grew a pumpkin that was over 600 pounds, I think 600. 604-pound pumpkin. And what he did with that pumpkin, yes. What he did with that pumpkin was he invited all of the young elementary school folks over to come see as the tractor came to pick up the pumpkin because that's the magic moment to, when they pick it up, hopefully the bottom isn't going to fall out. Because if there's any break in the skin, it doesn't qualify in the contest. Anyway, it was a pretty exciting day and now the elementary students are going to be growing giant pumpkins next year and Jason and the Grange are going to be helping them. So this is a person who touches a lot of lives and I'm honored and delighted to present Jason Green with the Hero of Human Services Award. Congratulations, Jason. Would you like to say a few words?
In fact, I'm just really nervous being up here, but, um, thanks.
I wouldn't feel bad about being nervous, Jason. I spend most of my life nervous. Everyone who knows me knows that. Okay, next, we have Coach Rick Edwards. Coach Rick Edwards. Hi, Coach.
I'm really nervous too.
This gentleman has a reputation that precedes him in numbers. Coach Rick Edwards has been recognized as the hero of human services because of his time and talents and his dedication, as his 10-year history as the local youth football coach and head coach of football, board member, and a mentor for the kids at Folsom, as well as areas of Sacramento County. He makes himself available to all the athletes and their families, not only for football, but also for personal challenges that may surface, and he helps guide them through the turbulent times. He founded the Papa Steve Football Fundamentals Camp in 2016, which allows kids from all over the region to come and receive quality coaching from big-name athletes and coaches, providing scholarships to those who may not have been able to attend otherwise, and making sure they have transportation to the camp as well. Coach Edwards has had a profound impact on the parents as well as other coaches, and his passion for the kids is contagious in reminding everyone that football is not just about getting out on the field, but it's also about recognizing your strengths on and off the field, and it's about working as a team. Coach Edwards has made a huge impact on the youth in Folsom and it means a lot to them. And I want to thank you for your contribution to the young folks and congratulate you as a hero of human services.
Thank you, Sue. I kind of wanted to make this thing go up and down. That would be pretty fun. First of all, where's Jason, the pumpkin guy? You stole my speech. I was going to say the same thing. I wanted to get out of here. I'm pretty nervous. And Carol, right? Carol Watts? I think, yeah. My wife, who's really the backbone of the Papa Steve's Fundamental Camp, I think if we add our ages together, we're still not 103. That's just phenomenal to me. And Coach Montoya, thanks for putting your jacket on. You have bigger guns than all my football coaches, so thanks for doing that. No, so a little bit about the Papa Steve camp. So Papa Steve Edwards was my father. Not only am I nervous, but I'm a crier. He died in a car accident unexpectedly in December of 2015. He's a native Californian, served 33 years in our armed forces, and 21 years serving our government in the defense industry. When he died, we thought, how do we honor this guy? And Papa Steve stood for access and inclusion through the game of football. So we thought, what better way to honor him than with a football camp? So through the help of about 30 people in the Vista-Folsom community, many of them which are here tonight or today, we were able to launch that camp in 2016. We have delivered that camp to over 600 youth athletes, grades eighth and below. Over 100 of them have attended the camp for free. When we started the idea to launch this camp, they said it couldn't be done here in our local community. They said, you'll never compete with Nike, you'll never compete with Gatorade, you'll never compete with Under Armour. Well, in 2017, we had 178 kids. This is the largest camp in Northern California through the eighth grade. To date, after four camps, we have raised over $32,000 with every penny, going back to the local community in all sports, not just football. We give to girls softball, we give to basketball, and we give to the soccer organizations. And I think in 2019, I'm going to get strong-armed and give it to that new sport that has come up on the West Coast called lacrosse. So with that, I'm very, very honored by the Board of Supervisors of Sacramento, and we look forward to many more years of the Papa Steve camp. Thank you very much.
Superintendent Tolle.
Well, good morning. And we've saved the rest of the best for last. We have four more heroes to recognize here, and I appreciate certainly, I think, the attention given to all of our honorees here today. And I want to first thank the Human Services Coordinating Council and all those who nominated our honorees here today because, again, obviously, somebody took the time and effort to put down in words some of the accomplishments and reasons why folks should be honored. And I think the messages, the powerful messages this morning from the honorees and certainly from those recognizing them, really do, I think, lend themselves to a lot of hope in this community for the future and certainly for all the good works that go on each and every day. Before I make some presentations, I just want to acknowledge a few folks I know that are here to also honor our honorees. We have some folks from the Elk Grove community. We have our Elk Grove City Councilperson, Darren Soon. We have Bobby Singh Allen from the Elk Grove School Board, Kevin Spee, Elk Grove Planning Commissioner. Commissioner, and a member of the chamber, and probably others that I haven't noted here, but want to recognize them as well, because again, they serve in different capacities and are here to recognize some of you who are being honored. So with that, let me jump into the first of four honorees this morning, and would like to have Odette Crawford join me here at the podium.[621.16][621.16](applause) I'll tell you a little story. I've known Odette for a number of years, and it was just here recently, the recognition for Irene West, that I saw Odette and we had a chance to chat at the end of the ceremony. It was an outstanding ceremony, Elk Grove. But again, as you're going to hear in just a moment, this lady has done tremendous things, along with many of you in our community. Odette, in case you didn't know, is a retired correctional administrator with the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation.[653.54][653.54](laughter) All right, got some fans over there, Odette. But she entered retirement, or so she says, in 2006, because she just started a whole nother life pursuit in giving back to our community to complement what she'd done, obviously, in her professional work. And that is to counsel young people, particularly those that are facing some significant challenges, and encourage them to make positive life choices. Her volunteer service goes in many different directions, but her work with the court-appointed special advocates, CASA, certainly with the Elk Grove and Sacramento City Unified School Districts, and the National Council of Negro Women and Children of Promise Program. But to kind of sum it up, she's a revered person, certainly for her work in community intervention. And her program on life skills has really, we talk about touching lives, I think it really has changed lives. We know it's changed lives. And she directs that program to elementary and middle school students who are at a point in their lives, as most of us well know, where they can be influenced pretty readily and peer pressure comes into play. And obviously, Odette recognizes that if you're going to change a life path, a lot of times it can be done at those younger ages. She's, to say the least, is a kind-hearted, experienced, and caring community member who works tirelessly in lending a helping hand through her dedicated service. And she inspires others to serve, not only young people, but certainly foster youth, but those that are challenged, and really, I think, brings to bear that there is hope and that you can get through those rough spots in life. You need to look at your choices that you're making. But to sum it up again, she is truly a hero of human service. So Odette, I'm going to recognize you and turn the podium over to you. So congratulations.[776.19][776.19](applause)
Thank you so much. I'm really humbled to be able to be one of the recipients of this award. I have heard some wonderful, wonderful, heartwarming things that kind of gives me chills. And my young friend here of 103, I'm with her. Nobody should be bored, okay? I really do thank the Board of Supervisors for giving me this honor. And you know, I'm just so humbled. Most of the time, you know, people who know me, I never have anything to say.[816.54][816.54](laughter) But I want to thank the people that are in attendance here today. My family, I got two cousins over here that I just found out about two years ago in Sacramento. It's a small world, and I love them.[831.13][831.13](applause) My family, my friends, and I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about Ms. Tommy Whitlow, who nominated me. This lady right here has been a supporter of me and such an advocate for youth. We both work on empowerment of parenting skills and empowerment of youth as well, because it's needed. You know, once you retire, you don't just sit back and not do anything. You know, you have to get busy, because the youth are the future of this country and this world. They are the future. One of these days, I might need one of those youth to take care of me. So guess what? I want to make sure they have all the skills.[878.82][878.82](laughter) So anyway, I'm going to cut through the chase. Tommy Whitlow, thank you so much for your support. Yvette Page, one of my biggest supporters, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, I appreciate and love you guys. Carol Noren, Executive Director of Court Appointed Special Advocate Program, thank you so much for being here. CASA is a nonprofit organization that needs us all. These kids need a continuous voice in court. We need to be able to strengthen them so that they know that we respect and love what they need and where they're coming from. So just remember, you know, keep them in your mind and in your prayers. Michelle, you're going to be all right. I got an extra can of, you know, WD-40. I'll let you use it later on. Thank you so much, everyone, for the honor.[937.01][937.01](applause)
Well, you can have a hug. You missed it. Let's get a picture out front here. Okay. You want to have a comment, John? The nominator has a... Joining her next, here at the podium, will be Brenda Lampella. Brenda could join me at the podium, please. Well, everyone's story is a bit different, but this lady, in addition to her professional duties in working with Human Assistance, correct, Department of Human Assistance, does a lot of volunteer work, taking up what Dorothy said about volunteering, no boredom and no excuses. So in addition to her daily work, Brenda is a volunteer with the City of Refuge, the Women's Safe House in Oak Park. And there, as you might imagine, she's been able to assist women who escape, attempting to escape sex trafficking and prostitution and other serious consequences in their life as a result of being victims many times. Her passion has been to serve, to help empower these women, who oftentimes struggle mightily to overcome domestic violence, other issues of addiction, and poverty, and homelessness. And again, you're really key, I think, in a lot of the lives of those folks. She also has worked with Project Heal, Heal, H-E-A-L, which is a faith-based organization affiliated with Project Church. She serves as a co-leader for a 12-step recovery program for individuals coping with addiction. And she currently mentors a number of women, I don't know how many, you can maybe tell us in a moment, how many you mentor, where she, again, works to help them change their lives in a positive way. So in including recovery and addiction counseling, she's known well amongst all those who she touches, as being a very humble and caring individual, who really does go above and beyond to brighten the lives of others, no matter what their situation or circumstance. And she's renowned for a quote, I think, that really reflects and represents who she is and what she stands for, and that is her willingness to, quote, "Lift the spirit and cheer a heart." And so her compassion and positive encouragement, again, have really reached deep into the lives and to the hearts of many women and their families. And she's an inspiration to all who know her, and we know that her charitable contributions, her generosity of spirit continue to make a big difference in the lives of people in this community. So with that, another hero of human service, Brenda Lampella. Brenda, congratulations.[1161.65][1161.65](applause)
Thank you very much for this recognition today, to the Board of Supervisors, to my colleague over here with the Department of Human Assistance, Susan Baxter. I don't know if you remember Eduardo, you were one of my trainers 14 years ago with the county of Sacramento. And to the supervisor who interviewed me with the county of Sacramento 14 years ago for giving me a chance and opportunity to be a restorer in the community. The job that I do in the daytime is I'm an eligibility worker, just a county employee, giving benefits to people who are in need, food stamps and medical. When I started in this community of work of human services, it was more face-to-face interaction, and I really love that element of being able to touch lives and have a relationship with people. And it's changed a little bit now. We're in a call center module. It doesn't mean that I can't do great service, and I still can't be that gap that gives hope to somebody and to build a bridge for a better future for these people. Outside of that, he had mentioned the different things I've done to be of service and plant seeds in the hearts of these women. I believe that all of us can be restorers and rebuilders in the community. Sometimes we get to see the fruits of our labor. Sometimes we just see the seeds planted and we don't see the harvest. But I know it's all about building relationship, one soul at a time. And many of these people, you know, part of the women that I do serve have come from sex trafficking and prostitution, as young as 10 years old, and it's in this heart of Sacramento. And most of these girls are coming out of foster care. I had no knowledge of this, and this is the agency that I work for, is Department of Human Assistance, and foster care children are being groomed and led into sex trafficking. I volunteered and partner with City of Refuge, they're an organization in Oak Park. They do many things in the community, in the marginalized individuals, giving them safe spaces, whether it's going there for homework, safe houses, school programs. And I'm just honored to work with so many great individuals who serve along a side of me, doing what I do, not to be noticed, but to be of service with God's heart. Thank you very much for having me.[1310.15][1310.15](applause)
Susan, do you want to come? I'd be here for you without you here. Sure.
Okay. I would just note, too, that Brenda is very conscientious about her work, because I think we were calling to tell her about the presentation. She wanted to know how long she was going to have to take off to be here, so.[1371.65][1371.65](laughter) And we're glad you're able to be here, Brenda, and congratulations to you, one of our heroes. Okay, next, I'd ask that Glenda Bliss, please join me here at the podium.[1380.65][1380.65](applause) And we've heard a lot of stories this morning. Hi, Glenda. And it comes from different aspects of how you affect people's lives. In this case, and Glenda can tell you more about it, but I was certainly moved by the stories this morning and the four resolutions that I'm given the privilege of presenting. But in this case, Glenda has been a volunteer with an organization called First Call Hospice. And her charge in that organization, obviously, is to mentor others who will carry on the work that she does. But to describe the work, and again, I think it's even difficult to put it into words, but obviously, you have to have a big heart and a lot of compassion, because her mission over the last several years has been where she's devoted almost 1,000 hours to being at the bedside of patients in their final hours. She's held their hands, she's offered them assurance, listened to their concerns, most likely she's prayed with them, and she's comforted them with her kind and good thoughts, often just listening to maybe some of the last words that they will speak before they pass from this life to the next. And as I reflected on that, it occurred to me that, again, the vibrancy of life and the desire to, you know, go on each day and to, you know, recover from the challenges and so forth is great. But oftentimes, as we go into those latter stages of our lives, it's important to have someone who cares, and most of us are blessed to have family or friends that be by our bedside, but not everybody has that ability. And so, Glenda, what you've been able to do is to be there for folks, and whether they have immediate family or friends, to be not just a caregiver, but be somebody there in spirit and mind, and certainly in soul, to share with them. And I think that speaks very highly to your work, and certainly, I want to just recognize you as one of our heroes. I know that you do a good deal of outreach, and I help people understand, obviously, death and maybe some of the things that challenge folks in those final days. But I think your gentleness, your understanding and true spirit of caring really helps to, I think, bring comfort, but also I know that just being there is very, very important to folks in their final hours. So Glenda, her work with the hospice has been, obviously, a real passion for her, and again, we recognize you as a hero of human service. Glenda, congratulations.[1554.27][1554.27](applause)
Thank you very much, and thank you for the board and for Rochelle from First Call. I am so blessed to be able to give compassion to people. God has really blessed me with having the spirit of blessing for other people. But I don't believe I've ever been on someone's deathbed and they've said, "I wish I had worked harder or bought more stuff." And so the words I can just leave with everyone is just really appreciate what you have. Appreciate your family, give them a hug, because honestly, we never know when our last day is here on our journey through this life. So I just want to leave that with you and let you know that, thank God for hospice, because hospice is such an organization that you just hold their hands and just pray with them, and people are just so blessed with just that last little bit of compassion for them for their whole life, because we are all passing through this on a journey, and we're all going to have to experience that at some time. And so just know that God is with you, and we are here just to help and bless each other. And I have so enjoyed everyone's story today, all the people that have served other people, and especially Dorothy, I really was impressed with you on telling everybody, "Please don't be bored in life, because there is so much to give of ourselves and for others." Thank you so much. I feel so honored of being here today. Thank you.[1667.73][1667.73](applause)
And last, but certainly not least, we have the opportunity to recognize someone who has certainly packed a lot of good work into their life thus far, and that's Dr. Bhavin Parikh. Dr. Parikh?[1722.51][1722.51](applause)
Yes, good morning. This was one of those that, as we were putting together resolution, there wasn't enough places for the warehouses, because it went on and on and on and on, all the things he was doing. So we tried to condense that and not leave out anything that was important. But in addition to, obviously, his work as a medical doctor, he is, again, like all of you, has volunteered his time, his resources and energy to assisting many worthy organizations. And in addition to assisting them, he's obviously helped to raise funds in a number of different, you know, capacities, and has helped many thousands of people from all walks of life, especially, you know, targeting and I think devoting his efforts to helping folks access and receive mental health and culturally competent services. And we've heard some other references to that here this morning, but I think he's recognized certainly amongst his patients, but I'm sure amongst the community in which he lives and serves, that that access is so very, very important. A couple of examples that, when he learned of, and we've heard it mentioned here a little earlier, when Carol spoke about learning...
earlier, when Carol spoke about learning of the suicide deaths amongst a particular population of our community, the Asian Pacific Islander population, and young students. We heard about that earlier and obviously for a number of generations, that has been something that has, you know, I think really garnered our attention, but more so now because I think of the frequency at which it occurs. And so he took that upon himself. He worked diligently to not only help others understand about it in conducting seminars and organize forums, to, I think, focus on mental health, but on suicide and to prevent, but also I think to intervene on behalf of the young people who are often troubled, may have difficulty in accessing because of language or cultural barriers and has continued to serve in that capacity. There are other examples as well. He, again, is a member of the Elk Grove community in addition to his professional work and some of the things he does with some of the focus on the populations he serves. He serves as a member of the Elk Grove Cities Multicultural Commission, been a leader in organizing a number of events that can bring attention to mental health needs, to community organizations that serve people from different walks of life, as I mentioned, some of those being, we embrace, My Sister's House, The Children's Receiving Home, we heard earlier, and the local chapter of The Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And because of his strong commitment, Dr. Parikh is helping to create a healthier community, one that's more welcoming, one that's more accessible for folks from different ages, different walks of life. And we want to just thank him for his ongoing work both professionally and personally and for his commitment of time, effort, resources. He's raised a significant sum of money through some of his efforts. And I know that there are folks here in the audience that I think want to recognize you as well, so we'll allow you to say some words. I think they have a special presentation or somebody in the audience that talked to me a moment ago. So, Dr. Parikh, congratulations, you're a hero.
Yeah. Before I start, I'd like to thank all of you, all the attendees for staying here. I know it's a busy day. So on behalf of all honorary, thank you so much for coming and supporting us. And big thanks to County Board of Supervisor for, you know, recognizing us. Now again, I'm a full-time physician psychiatrist at Kaiser Permanente and I have a very busy life, busy practice, but I strongly believe in community, giving back, that's my motto. And going through my own personal hurdle where I lost, we lost our home, became homeless for almost a couple of months while living in Chicago in 1994, I realized how to appreciate. It really, you know, changed my life and I really appreciate my family, friends, community. So after coming from work, my second life starts, which is a community work. And I do a lot of community work. The main passion is the mental health and you know suicide is a big troubling issue in our community. Forty-four thousand people commit suicide every year in the United States. That means 120 people take their life every day. And every 12 minutes, we lose one person. This is so sad and troubling. In the world, we lose one person every 43 seconds. So we got to do something. We got to do more to prevent this suicidal death. And I started with OCA and other nonprofit organizations called Mental Health Initiative, Suicide Prevention Initiative, to promote mental health issues, to break the stigma. Last year, we had a support of four nonprofit organizations. This year, I have nine. My goal is to take this initiative to school board, like different school district, and to educate our youth especially about the misuse of social media, cyberbullying, and, you know, help us out. This is a very crucial issue in our community and I see this in my routine practice. And I can see that a lot of folks can get help at early age, so early intervention is a very crucial factor. So please do encourage folks within your community, in your family, your neighbors, to seek help if they, you know, feeling sad or suicidal, you know, that can be preventable. Through my other organization, Indian Association of Sacramento, we have raised more than $110,000 in the last 15 years and given away almost lots of money. Locally, we have donated money to Big Brother, Big Sisters Organization, My Sister's House, so many other charities. We bought a big ambulance in southern India and that ambulance have transported almost 4,000 poor patients and 700 dead bodies in the last 11 years. We have adopted so many underprivileged children, girls, boys, and providing their education. Through City of Palgro, I'm serving as a commissioner for multicultural commission and diversity inclusion. So we like to, we promote diversity, we promote well-being of different diversity inclusiveness. So I'm very thankful to City of Palgro for giving me this volunteer work opportunity. And through HAF, which is a Hindu-American foundation, we support refugees from Nepal, Bhutan, India, and we do a lot of other work. So thank you so much. And I'd like to recognize my friends and community leaders who came here to support me, Bobby Singh Allen, Kevin Spees, Darren, I have friends from Indian communities. So I'd like you guys to stand up and I'd like to say thank you so much. And last, but not least, my wife, Shittie, I'd like you to come on the podium. Thank you so much. And I say namaste, thank you so much.
This is our custom to recognize, you know, the great man and the hero of our county. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
Congratulations to all our heroes.
So thank you all very much for being here today. Just one more round of applause for all the heroes in the room. Thank you all very much. And we are still gonna take a quick break. We're gonna take a break out into the lobby for some refreshments and please introduce yourselves to the heroes that were celebrated today. Thank you again.
And I want to say that congratulations is not the right word, it's really thank you.
Yes.
And with that, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Sorry, board members, it's only five minutes.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. Second County Board of Supervisors, would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisors Frost, excuse me, Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Cerna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we get started on the agenda, is Susan Gallagher here? Okay, Susan. So Susan had comments on items that were actually on consent, but I will allow two minutes.
Good morning or afternoon now. My name is Susan Gallagher and I'm with the Executive Director of Cal Voices, formerly NorCal Mental Health America. We are the oldest consumer mental health advocacy agency in California and I've been coming here myself for about 22 years now. Basically saying the same thing over and over again. I feel like it's Groundhog Day, but I guess that's just the work of advocates. One of the things that we wanted to talk about in terms of items 16 through 18 is the lack of stakeholder involvement that went on to come to the conclusions to fund those programs. The requirement for a community planning process is not my opinion, it's the welfare and institution code, as long as, as well as the regulations that govern that, and I'm willing to share those with you today. But basically, what was discussed this morning and approved on a consent agenda was not a part of the three-year plan, the MHSA three-year plan. So if it wasn't in the three-year plan and it didn't have a CPP, it shouldn't be funded with MHSA. And I'm not saying that these are not important priorities because we all know that FSPs are really important priorities. But there was a May update to the three-year plan and it talked about the lack of data for these FSB programs. And yet, we turn around and we just hand them $12 million. So I'm very concerned that there's a lack of client-driven process. Clients should be involved in all levels of the care, including program planning, evaluation. We just don't see that happening and it hasn't been happening for years and it's really frustrating, particularly when MHSA was supposed to be the thing that transformed the system. You cannot transform the system if you don't have the people hurting the most, the most impacted by these services at the table, at every level of the table. And we are literally contracted to be at the table and we're not even at the table. We have one consumer advocate liaison for 20,000 clients and it's even, she's completely marginalized. We've been marginalized for years, but it's just really important to listen to us because we are the advocates, we know this. We know the MHSA inside and out, we give trainings on it. We're here for you folks, we're here for the division. We're happy to work, to give more input regarding that. But we also want to point out the fact that the Cal Mesa funding, which I think was item 18, never went through a local review process. The Mental Health Board didn't approve that, neither did the Steering Committee. So these are really things that we want to call out. Once again, I don't enjoy calling them out, but I do feel compelled to call them out and I feel truly convicted for, on behalf of the mental health clients in this county, that I call them out. For years, you guys have been sitting on money that should have been funded every single year, but you've been leaving it in these unspent funds. It was not earmarked. We've received a lot of gaslighting responses to our requests, none of them have been factual. But at this point in time, I would say, you need to spend the money, but you can't do it without a robust community planning process and everything needs to follow MHSA three-year plan, which then...
Can you wrap it up?
That's the way it's supposed to be. Again, not my opinion, it's the law and I'll leave this with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wagstaff and then Mr. Natoli. Mr. Wagstaff, do you have anything to say?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman members. Certainly I would agree with the speaker that community involvement, stakeholder input is critical to what we do with MHSA. And it was my understanding that there was a lot of that that led to these items that you saw earlier this morning, including coordination with the MHSA Steering Committee and the Mental Health Board. I will make sure that Dr. Quist and Dr. Bealenson make connection with the speakers to have a discussion about that. If there are ways that that can be improved, we'll certainly be receptive to that because we're all about trying to get that input.
Thank you. And Susan, Susan, can you make sure that Mr. Wagstaff has your contact information?
Thank you.
Mr. Natoli.
Yeah, I just would, I think Bruce addressed it, but I, again, Susan certainly has been here on many occasions over the course of, been a part of 20 years and certainly been an advocate obviously for mental health funding, for programs and service delivery and for community stakeholder involvement and alignment with not only the law, but I think with good process and outreach. And again, I think Bruce, to what you just said, I think, you know, getting a meeting with Susan and maybe some of the principals that she works with and certainly Dr. Bealenson, Dr. Quist, and maybe even yourself, because again, she's been here with a consistent voice. She, you know, certainly gives her time, but I think as an organization, who they represent, but also I think the folks that we're all trying to best serve and better serve with obviously the dollars that come to this county. So I would just encourage that, if that hasn't already happened, I think we need to redouble our efforts in that regard, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 41 is the county participation in the proposed Sacramento Homeless Policy Council.
Mr. Gill.
Mr. Wagstaff's gonna introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman members.
Want to come to the podium, Bruce?
Sure.
Thanks. Get your better side on TV.
Thank you, Mr. Chair members. Bruce Wagstaff, Deputy County Executive over Social Services. A few brief comments to introduce this next item. This proposal for a homeless policy council stems from discussions that were held earlier this year between the county, City of Sacramento, Sacramento Steps Forward, recognizing the important programs and strategies that are either underway or planned for implementation throughout the county to address homelessness and raising the question of whether or not there ought to be an opportunity for an organized effort to bring together the leadership of the various cities in the county to not just share important information, although that's very important, but also to provide a forum to discuss ways to improve collaboration, coordination, potentially leverage resources and provide strategic direction. Not, and this is important, not as a JPA, Joint Powers Agreement, not as a formal decision-making body, but to get together, look for ways to improve collaboration, coordination, leverage resources and move forward together cooperatively. This is in line with the direction that we've seen in different sets of guidelines from the state relating to the new state funding being made available to address homelessness. And so Sacramento Steps Forward is here today and I will turn the podium over to them to present the proposal. I did want to offer one additional note, though. When this idea was initially raised, priority by your body was expressed to be sure that there were discussions with the various cities to get their input, answer their questions. Sacramento Steps Forward has had individual meetings to that effect and I wanted you to know that we also organized a meeting just within the last two weeks, I forget exactly when it was, where we invited all the cities in the county to come for a discussion on this proposal. And we had a great meeting, most of the cities were there, a lot of comments, a lot of questions, but I can tell you that as we went around the room, as the meeting adjourned, all of the staff there from all of the cities that were in attendance, while they couldn't speak formally for their councils, and they made that very clear, did express that there was their view that should this proposal move forward, that their councils would be wanting to participate. Okay? So with that, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I'll present this over, I'll turn this over to Sacramento Steps Forward.
Thank you. Mr. Kiesling, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Kennedy. Supervisors Matt Kiesling, speaking today on behalf of Sacramento Steps Forward Board of Directors. I am the current Chair of the Board and have been on the Board since 2015. Just wanted to provide you a little bit of background on this issue. Sacramento Steps Forward is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that manages the HMIS system, the data collection, applies for and receives federal funds and distributes those to service providers throughout this region. It also staffs the continuum of care. The continuum of care is really your boots on the ground, they're your service providers, agency staff from both city, county, SHRA, all of the jurisdictions. It's the faith community, it's law enforcement, it's really people who have dedicated their life to serving the homeless population. So SSF staff serves both the COC. It also, on a monthly basis, meets with our Board of Directors. But it's been apparent to me for quite some time that one more voice was missing in that conversation that is critically important and that is the voices of our elected officials. Every jurisdiction in this region is working hard to address homelessness in this region and you all have taken great steps. Sacramento County in particular, with the regional plan to address homelessness, has really led that effort. I will say unfortunately, in meeting with other jurisdictions, not a lot of elected officials from other jurisdictions in this county are aware of that plan or what's in it. And really, that's the idea behind this council is to create an opportunity for elected officials from all of the jurisdictions in Sacramento County to get together with Sacramento Steps Forward staff, with staff from the jurisdictions, the Chair of Steps Forward's Board, as well as the Chair of the COC, and have a discussion to understand what's going on, what every jurisdiction is doing, share information to hopefully improve our ability to provide services, streamline efforts, and more than anything, just make sure that we're improving our overall regional approach to addressing homelessness. As was mentioned by Bruce Wagstaff, this is not a JPA, this is not a decision-making body, but it is an opportunity to engage at a deeper level. And hopefully by doing so, we will improve overall collaboration in the region and our response to the homelessness crisis that we are facing. I would also point out, and it's critically important, that last year, the state of California provided nearly $20 million to Sacramento County for various programs through both HEEP and KEHS. It's anticipated that this next year, there could be up to $30 million, but one of the criteria they're looking for is a true regional collaboration. So we think that this policy council also allows us to make a showing to the state that we're taking additional steps in that direction to collaborate at a regional level in addressing this issue. And I hope that all of you will support this item today and look forward to working with you in the coming years. Thanks.
So I have one question then, just to put a point on what you just, is in your opinion...
It's anticipated that this next year, there could be up to $30 million, but one of the criteria they're looking for is a true regional collaboration. So we think that this policy council also allows us to make a showing to the state that we're taking additional steps in that direction to collaborate at a regional level in addressing this issue. And I hope that all of you will support this item today, and look forward to working with you in the coming years. Thanks.
So I have one question, then, just to put a point on what you just, is, in your opinion, would this put us in a better position to get more funding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Bates.
I'll turn it to Ms. Lisa Bates, the Director of Sacramento Steps Forward.
Still, good morning. Lisa Bates with Sacramento Steps Forward. I'm going to quickly go through some of these slides to give you a little bit more of the nuts and bolts of the proposal. I think Bruce and Matt did a good job of giving you some context. And so one thing I did want to just reiterate is the excellent plan that you all adopted in December of last year, and also the COC adopted, had six main goals that it was attempting or is attempting to meet. I think there are 29 strategies associated with that and probably over 100 actions. Included within your plan is your goal to strengthen system leadership and accountability, and many of the actions that are identified here are underway or have been initiated, but one that we are proposing today as a potential approach is to engage the political leadership within the county that is actually identified in your plan. We've talked a little bit about what we're proposing as a structure for the council. Again, it is a deliberative body. It is not a decision-making body, and its purpose would really to provide that broad-based collaborative strategic leadership at an elected leadership level for Sacramento's response to the crisis of homelessness that we're facing. Some of the objectives, although these would be further refined with the council once it is seated and the development of a charter, would be to share policy information and solutions that each jurisdiction is using to address homelessness and how that impacts the overall system, to really try to align and coordinate some of our programs so that we have a better alignment at the system level, and to accelerate knowledge sharing and actionable best practices for addressing homelessness in the region. Just in terms of context and how this would sit relative to other collaborative tables, you have the continuum of care, which was discussed earlier by Matt. We've just initiated a funders collaborative, which is also part of your homeless plan. This has been reestablished as part of the plan, and includes the public entities from those communities that declared a shelter crisis, and it is also including SECOG staff, SHRA staff, and SETA staff as well. And it's a place where we can build some common operational standards and performance measures as funders of a lot of the programs that are addressing homelessness in the community. So again, the policy council will be at that elected leadership level and more of that strategic level. So all three, I think, are very important components to how we are looking at solving our homelessness situation in Sacramento. We're proposing currently that there's 12 members, two from the Board of Supervisors, two from the Sacramento City Council, and then one from each of the surrounding jurisdictions. In addition, as Matt mentioned, we would, for continuity, want to have the continuum of care chair, as well as Sacramento Steps Forward Board Chair, participate.
Lisa, if I could interrupt on that. So the makeup of the two members from the Board of Supervisors was intentional because of the Brown Act, correct?
Intentional because of the Brown Act, yes. Yeah, so although we would anticipate noticing this meeting and having it open to the public, it doesn't have all of the requirements of a Brown Act situation.
Thank you. So while you're on the slide, relative to the composition of the council, especially that part coming from this board, I assume it's well within the discretion of our board whether we wanted to ensure that at all times you had a representative, for instance, this is just an example, for instance, that represents the unincorporated county and a member that represents one of the, you know, has in their district one of the seven cities or more than one of the seven cities, so that you kind of have that balance coming from this board at all times in terms of, you know, representing those two broad categories of our constituencies, unincorporated and city dwellers. I think that's important to consider, given the fact that I think we can all agree in this room that the challenge of homelessness certainly doesn't respect political boundaries and is, I mean, it's a challenge that is pervasive in all corners of the county. So I assume that that's well within our...
Yes, so the way this is structured is at the discretion of each jurisdiction and how they choose to select their representatives. We don't do that or dictate that. We are suggesting that we start perhaps with the council that would meet three times a year. Just given all the approvals and the vacation and holiday schedules, we don't anticipate that the first convening would happen until the first quarter of 2020. We would like to work with the seated council in terms of the approach and the agenda. So we're somewhat fluid here in terms of what that structure would look like, because we want to build that out with the seated council. But just to give you a sample of potential agenda topics, you know, certainly policy discussion on major initiatives, including sheltering and housing. Our organization is, you know, looking at coordinated entry and a complete redesign, so the ability to share some of that work at one of the convenings is certainly something we'd be interested in. And then just, you know, normal performance reviews and updates around how our programs or our plan is performing. It also could be focused on common issues that may impact all of the different jurisdictions, the parkway, for example, or encampment issues or preventative measures. So it's intended to be a safe or a place where we can go a little bit deeper into potential issues that are affecting homelessness in our community. We know it's not a perfect model, but we hope it's a first step in an ability to pilot what might work well in terms of furthering our alignment and our strategic direction around homelessness. I will say there are a couple of other jurisdictions in the last few weeks that have heard standing up something similar, so I'm aware that Yolo County is doing something. I haven't been able to get my hands on it, but I have been made aware that there's something similar in the way Yolo is standing up. And just last week, Fresno County also established a council that's very similar to this. It has a little bit more expanded membership. So I think, in part because of the state preferences, that there be regional collaboration to the extent there isn't already something in place, communities are starting to build something similar to what we're proposing today. So I would anticipate you're going to see more of that across the state as we move forward.
Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, Lisa, I didn't know if you were done. I can certainly wait if you want to finish, and I can ask my questions after.
I was just going to give you more reasons why I think it's a good idea, but I can stop.
Okay. I don't want to cut that short. I just, a question, then, in moving forward with this, as relates to, in some of the previous slides, but I think even to the question the Chair asked about more money, but as it relates to budgetary authority and land use policy authority, whether it's vested with this board or with the respective city councils, it's not intended that this council, obviously with the focus on collaboration, coordination, trying to have, you know, a focus regarding how we can, you know, best address this, recognizing it doesn't know any political jurisdictions, there's no intent, though, behind this to get into people's business in that respect as relates to budget or land use, right?
No, it has no decision-making authority, and so it is purely deliberative, and I know that there's been some concern that might be confusing to the public, so we'll have to make sure that it's very clear as we move forward with the charter and how we communicate the convenings. And I will just say that, you know, Sacramento Steps Forward will be staffing these and working with the council, and also with your respective staff to make sure that we're getting the agendas right. So we'll be doing this in collaboration.
Okay. But again, I think it's been sufficiently explained, certainly to me, and, you know, I'm comfortable with the recommendation here today, but I just, I wanted to be sure, again, I haven't had a lot of feedback, no conversation relative to the establishment of the policy council with, you know, say, some of the city leaders and, you know, the district I represent, but nonetheless, I still think it has, you know, this has merit and that if it helps us to, you know, improve our, you know, our approach, whatever, however big or small, I think, then, you know, that can be a good thing, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Frost.
I just had a quick question relating to, you were mentioning, once seated, we would move forward with the development of a charter, and in the staff report, there was mention of, you know, the potential for a possible JPA or, you know, progressing over time. It's flexible at this time. And I get about the state asking for collaboration, and I do think it's good for us to have this conversation as long as everyone's in the room at the table. And I really appreciate that you went, you know, you and the staff went and met with all the jurisdictions, and they were all included. It's important to me that if we do something like this, that every jurisdiction is part of it. And I think when we're talking about regional, there are some very important issues that we're facing. One of them is mental health, and how are we going to house those people who really are in a position where they're not able to manage on their own, and they really need to be in a place where they're cared for? And without the mental health institutions and with the depletion of resources over decades with closing mental health institutions, they end up becoming criminalized because they just can't remember to take their medicines, and they become a danger to themselves or the community, and it's just a vicious circle for them. So some of those solutions might emerge out of a regional conversation. And if we're going to talk about regional, I think it's really important to, you know, I totally agree. It doesn't, jurisdictions and lines, they're invisible in a situation like this. I can attest to the fact that in Citrus Heights, we have many times relied on Roseville, and some of the folks over on that, in the Placer County, who we've worked together for solutions with our shelters and with our homeless. So I'm interested in possibly, if we're going to make this regional, why don't we make it truly regional and invite all the six-county region to be a part of it? Because we're all so closely involved in that, in the same solutions and the same, there might be some crossover where we can save money on some of the big things that we want to do. The other thing that I wanted to ask you was regarding the nonprofits that are serving on the board. You're, we're talking about an elected, you want the politicians engaged in the conversation, the decision-makers for policy engaged in the conversation, and there are some nonprofits on the board. I'm assuming they would be ex officio members of the board, that they would not have a voting, a seat that represented voting authority. I would like to see that, because I think if it's, I think it should be, if we're going to have this conversation and we're going to be making regional decisions, it should be the electeds that have that voting authority.
So, thank you for those comments. A couple of quick responses. First, I would like to give credit to Bruce. Bruce Wagstaff worked hard to bring together a lot of the other jurisdictions that you had mentioned you were interested in seeing involved in this council. At this point, we have reached out to every jurisdiction within Sacramento County. And tying that back to actually Supervisor Serna's comment about looking to make sure representation from this board includes, if it is going to be one supervisor that represents a district that is largely a portion of, say, the City of Sacramento, it'd be nice to have a supervisor that also represented a large portion of the unincorporated county that wasn't within the City of Sacramento, just for overall balance on this council.
Or it could be a supervisor that represents four other cities.
That'd be fantastic as well. Maximizing inclusiveness would be our overall objective, and that then ties into your next point, which is, if the other surrounding counties, in particular in the larger SECOG region, start to set up similar bodies, perhaps there will become an opportunity for us to interact and have a dialogue with them as well. We're seeing this as sort of a first step. Let's start it here in Sacramento County. It's Sacramento County that is served by Sacramento Steps Forward, and the COC is comprised of service providers within Sacramento County. So let's start it at our level, and if it grows to the surrounding jurisdictions, like we said, this is us kicking off a process that we think will hopefully take on a life of its own and only improve that dialogue and conversation. So we would welcome that in the future as things begin to unfold. And then I think, to your last point, as to voting members, it's not intended at this point that this body is actually voting, because we're not actually a deliberative, a decision-making body. It's just a deliberative body. So more than anything, it will be information sharing and conversations. If it is to someday shift to a JPA structure, your point is well taken, that it should be JPA members that are from the jurisdictions, and it should be all elected officials. At this point, that's not what we're proposing. It's simply to begin a process and improve the overall dialogue. But, point well taken.
The PowerPoint says, potential agenda topics, policy direction for major initiatives. So that looks to me like policy direction. And if it's going to be policy direction, the voting members should be the electeds. That's what I would like to see.
Understood. That sounds good.
Supervisor Frost, just one point on the JPA. As the board knows, no JPA can be formed without us bringing that back to this body. So just because there might be a proposal coming, has to go through our process, and it will have to make a recommendation if there will be a JPA in it. So automatically...
But in this PowerPoint, it's talking about three meetings a year and potential agenda topics and policy direction.
No, understood. I just want to assure you that if there is, there's no way, if the board agrees to this, that this will create a JPA. This will not do that.
Okay, and just so I'm clear, because I do think it's good to have the conversation. I'm not opposed to that under certain circumstances, one of which is if we're going to have policy, if this is policy electeds, then it should be the electeds that are driving the policy direction that's being given. There's a little bit of a conflict of interest when you have two nonprofits who receive funding, and they're also involved in the policy decisions and directions. So for me, I, that's the only reason. The other thing is, I really feel like, I appreciate that Supervisor Serna brought it up about, because the outlying areas are different, and I really thank you for recognizing that, because we really want to make sure that we're in that conversation and that we can be a part of the solutions, too.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Further along the line, which is really not for you, but for this board to consider when they do their appointments to the board, if this does pass, that districts three and four represent 63% of the unincorporated area, and the others are scattered, but...
Population-wise.
Yeah, I'm using the DOT formula, lane miles, yeah, population.
Otherwise, District Five represents everybody.
Yeah.
What?
No, I just, no, I said, population-wise, because geography-wise, it's different, but population, that's why I wanted to be clear.
Okay. My point being that the City of Sacramento is heavily representative, you know, represented, they have two, suggested they have two representatives in each of the cities. So I think it's really important that you have at least one from the unincorporated area, from the county board, if not both, just for the future, whenever these appointments come up. And I agree with Supervisor Frost about when policy direction comes, it needs to be from the elected officials. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all I have from the board. I do have public comment, and we'll start with Liz Blum. And Liz will be followed by Nikki Jones.
Good morning, Board. So this governance board is critical for oversight, accountability, and improving outcomes for people experiencing homelessness across fragmented systems of housing and homeless services. So I'm here to speak in support of it. Thank you for everything that's been said so far. Just want to add that we also need to collect and analyze more robust data to inform systems improvements, and that this is the first step to achieving that.
Thank you, Liz. Nikki, followed by Bridget Duffy.
I'm also here to speak in support of committing to regional coordinated and collaborative, as we said here, broad-based collaborative and strategic leadership on this issue. One thing that, you know, I heard repeatedly about the crisis of homelessness and the homelessness situation, but did not hear too much about the people experiencing homelessness. Who are the experts in what can work in their lives and what doesn't, and what hasn't so far? Who are the experts in what can work in their lives and what doesn't, what hasn't so far? And I'm just wondering, you know, they are also those most acutely impacted by the crisis. You know, when we talk about the homelessness crisis, who is experiencing it first and foremost? And that's people who are living outside. And so to really incorporate their voice and their solutions and their critiques and their system analysis would be a very impactful and important part. You know, they say in every issue, nothing about us without us. So I'm actually a little bit surprised that this plan didn't come with the idea of having folks from unincorporated areas, from downtown, from cities that are part of the county, who are living in those areas outside and experiencing navigating those service systems. Because it's a, it's a real challenge. It's a real destabilizing process. It's a real traumatic process. And a lot of, you know, the policies of both the city and the county to continue to destabilize and torture people through sweeps and move-along orders and confiscation and destruction of property is a situation that makes the matters worse. As a service provider and an advocate for years, I can say that it's so much harder to follow up on somebody's medical care or their housing appointments when they're moved three times in a week by law enforcement. And so we really need some bold solutions. We really need to move in an innovative and different direction that listens to the voices of the people most impacted. And this is an opportunity to do that and I encourage you all to move in that direction.
Thank you, Nikki. Bridget Duffy. And Bridget will be followed by Crystal Sanchez.
Hello, Bridget Duffy. Glad to be here. I was really touched by all the heroes and the human desire to help people has been just, the vibes are all over this room today, so I'm hoping they'll help my words come out right. Right now, the policy of Sacramento seems to be policing the problem. And I think to get the right mindset, we have to realize, these people are not criminals. They are unfortunate, but they are not criminals. If the police wants something to do, maybe they should go after the people that created the problem in the first place, who are profiteers. Profiteering is illegal still in this country. And to be charging the astronomical prices for housing is, in fact, profiteering. As a matter of fact, there are units being held off the market right now that could be housing, but aren't because of a financial gain from a private owner. Now, we live in a republic, we live in a democracy, where you guys are entrusted to uphold the Constitution, which means uphold the rights of the citizens. Now, this crisis has gotten so big that finally, something is being done, and I applaud you for that. But please, don't let it just be paperwork. We have to get people off the street and into housing as soon as possible. It's creating a health problem. It's creating, you know, environmental problems. There's, there's, this is definitely an emergency. This isn't a couple of people on the streets. This is a crisis that as human beings, we, right now, living here, are charged with facing and mending. You know, it's a problem we have to face together. And stopping the sweeps would be the very, very first thing that I would absolutely recommend you to do. Displacing people who are already displaced is not going to be helpful for anything. So, thank you for trying something.
Thank you. Crystal Sanchez. And Crystal, followed by Mike Jaskey.
Thank you. So my name's Crystal Sanchez and I am the president of Sacramento Homeless Union. We are ran by the homeless and advocates. So what I'm bringing to this, I'm neutral on this policy council. And the reason that I am neutral is because I didn't hear anything about their specific voices being heard. The impacted, the advocates, and the feet on the streets, and the nonprofits that have been doing this for years, need to be part of this voice. Policies do not need to just be about them, they need to be with them. Human needs are not statistics. Unhoused are experts on their own situations. We need to open up these conversations, like Sue Frost said. Nationally, sweeps are displacing and killing people. We must integrate services and accessibilities with these people. You wouldn't want policies forced upon you without your voices. In order for policies to be successful, we must all work together. Homelessness in California is a crisis and it can only be solved if we do it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Jaskey. And after Mike Jaskey is John Foley.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy, other supervisors. For the record, my name's Mike Jaskey, representing Sacramento Area Congregations Together, a member of St. Mark's UMC, and I live in Supervisor Peters' district. SAC Act supports the county executive's recommendation that the board endorse the formation of this policy council and to appoint members to participate once it is formed. As you all remember, I have been and other members of SAC Act have been before you many times, talking about the need for a collaborative coordinated plan in homelessness. This council will not accomplish that goal all by itself, but it will help improve the dialogue among all the jurisdictions that are participating and trying to find that solution. It's become clear to us that homelessness is a regional issue, and I mean Sacramento County as the region when I say that word right now, where actions taken by one jurisdiction can have consequences for other jurisdictions, whether intended or not. And these policy decisions need to be better understood when such actions are taken by local boards like yourselves. So thank you for taking this step. It's a small step, but it's a step in the right direction that will help lead to an improved situation for our homeless people in this county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Foley, followed by Mackenzie Wilson.
Chairman Kennedy, members of the board. My name is John Foley, Executive Director of Sacramento Self-Help Housing. I support this effort. I think it's a good idea to have electeds take, in a visible and highly, high-profile way, some serious responsibility for a coordinated effort. We're not very well coordinated right now. An example of what I hope can be worked on is the work that we and others do with outreach navigation, where PBIDs have outreach navigators, I've got outreach navigators, you've got outreach navigators, the cities have outreach navigators. They don't get trained together, they don't coordinate what they do, they don't have a unified program, so that homeless folks who encounter them don't know what they're encountering and get confusing and sometimes contradictory support. It's the kind of thing that if you're all working together, I think there's a chance that we can find a way to do it in a way that is coordinated, so that people experiencing homelessness get a straight answer when they're asking for help. In addition, I think that currently, because Steps Forward is a nonprofit, their board members are basically, you know, not public, because the advisory board tends to focus entirely on the HUD-funded programming, not really an open conversation about anything you're doing, or the city of Sacramento is doing, or the city of Elk Grove is doing, or anybody else. We need another forum that is more comprehensive. And so I think this is a great idea and I'm very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Mackenzie. And Mackenzie's followed by Jeffrey Tardagia.
Mackenzie Wilson, Sacramento Tenants Union. Exactly, okay, so I want to tell you about something I did yesterday. So yesterday morning, there was an action over at the Sheridan. It was the meeting between the Association of Counties and the League of Cities. They were actually having this conversation, right, about how they can work together regionally and things like that. Again, the problem was that impacted voices weren't being heard. Even the cost of the ticket to go was like 50 to 100 bucks. And then, of course, you guys as counties and cities pay for the people that you send to those things, which of course didn't include folks actually experiencing these things. And so then we got there, of course, this was a peaceful protest, us chanting, this happens, right? We go inside the building, they end up going inside the room, they get inside the room. One of the, like, they tried to lock them out. But one of the people who was actually with one of the organizations actually like came and like burst the door open, it was sick. It was really cool that this guy had let them in. So they went in peacefully, got some time up on the stage, but I'll tell you what was concerning to me. How many people in that room were trying to get those folks arrested because they weren't, they aren't supposed to be there? How many folks actually stood up and were like, are they even on the agenda when it's these folks that are the agenda? And it just, and all of this. So when I have my friends and my comrades and people around us saying, impacted voices, impacted voices, you're missing impacted voices, I don't know how to tell you that, like, those were the people that you have doing this work. And how many people followed us outside after we left peacefully to tell us how alarmed they were and how many people were in that room upset that these impacted voices wanted to speak? Means that there's something wrong being done around this work. And so I just, we have an opportunity right now with what we're doing to modify, to really be intentional. And I'm really excited that you guys are making efforts. I love effort, effort is dope. But that's the wrong thing, you know, the thing about effort is that sometimes we mess up. And right now, we're letting you know, like, hey, this is a direction, that's the wrong one, and we could probably fix it now. Thank you, and I'll be talking to you guys soon.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Jeffrey. Jeffrey will be followed by Robert Copeland.
Well, unfortunately, Board, I am involved with a lot of these coalitions that you're hearing all about. But I'm here to invite you guys, to remind you to read through the 2006 through 2016 homeless study that was done before. I believe at that time, you had elected officials involved. This is the reason why we need to get elected officials involved. I look at three members of the RT board, and right now, it is a desert coalition. And the reason I have not been to the last two COC meetings is because I no longer have the 15 that will take me downtown out there. So it's an hour journey, just to make that little thing to get to Del Paso Boulevard and the center. But I have the last three years been serving with the COC as your public and commenting and before Ben and before Roy left, was, I think, fairly effective in commenting about this. This last year, I've served on your, as a pit coordinator, your point in time, and that should lead to some better questions. I hope that this does take place, and in September, you do meet, so that you know what the, should we say, next pit comments and get some directed comments for the county. But COC didn't know that what was going on with RT and what they were closing down because there was no coordination. I appreciated Phil Serna having the discussion about dealing with the Fruit Ridge Collaborative, which a number of these groups meet at and use, so it's been an effective tool through there. I say I have a few seconds left, but we'll say to you, I will look forward, I'm looking forward to try and serve for the information sake of evaluating programs with the COC. And please encourage you to look at this. I am disappointed that over 10 years, all we've seen is homeless communities double, and I still would turn around and say, going from 3,000 to 5,000 is not 20%. So guys, please understand all of these things. And yes, Patrick, I know you're supposed to be our homeless coordinator, but I haven't seen you, aren't you homeless coordinator for the county?
I have no idea what you're talking about, Jeffrey.
Oh, you don't do with any homeless, so it's only Daryl Steinbrenner that deals with the homeless?
Thank you, Jeffrey. Robert Copeland, please.
I really want to support this, but right now, I can't. Because where is the public involved in this decision-making process? In the homeless population? A lot of the people made good points, and I don't see, where's the advocates going to be in this, involved in this process? They're nowhere. It's all elected officials and maybe Sacramento Steps Forward. That's not good enough. You need a shock member, you need a public, three times a year? Is this a joke? I mean, I can't support this right now. Improve this up plan, or I'm not going to support it.
Thank you, Robert. John Kreitz.
Good afternoon, John.
Okay, let's see if I can get through this. I think that this is a good idea. I think that we need to get elected officials involved in the decision-making process. At the point which these ideas are formulated on what to do, it's pretty clear that the punitive direction that we've taken over the last 40 years hasn't solved the problem. In fact, it just keeps getting worse. So, part of that problem is that you have people on one side coming up with ideas of what to do, and then they pitch them to you, and then you see things that were never seen by the people who came up with these things. It would be easier if we had elected officials involved in the decision-making process from ground zero, since they're going to be the ones that has to sell this idea to the public. And ultimately, if we put up any kind of shelter or anything else, we're going to find that the biggest problem is selling it to the neighborhoods, that people do not want this kind of thing in their neighborhood. This is what you guys are good at. That's why you got elected, because you speak well to people, you smooth things over, you make things work. And this is your specialty. And this is what we're asking for. If you try to get the people to understand that this homeless thing that's in their neighborhood, we're not drawing new homeless in, they're already there. We're asking to manage this in a way so that we don't have this big mess all over the neighborhoods, so we don't have this, you know, I don't have to tell you what the problem is. You've seen it for years now, decades. So, I think that I would like to see this, I think that I'd have maybe a few resilience. Or the other thing is, when you talk about a regional plan, I think it would be better if we started off with the idea of trying to get our local ducks in a row before we start, because the bigger you make this thing, the more spread out you make it, the harder it's going to be to come to any decisions. So, I don't know, that's enough.
Thank you, John. It's always a pleasure. Keon Bliss. And that is the last speaker card I have.
Just a quick correction, my name's Keon.
Sorry, I apologize.
I didn't anticipate speaking on this particular item, but I was, I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I noticed from looking more into the policy proposal and stuff like that. One, a lot of people have already pointed out that the voices and people that are most impacted by decisions are not in the space, are not in the room actually being heard on this. But also, I noticed too, that the organization, SAC Act Forward, seems to be mostly more affluent white individuals who are not, like, who don't really have much, much experience with this. There's a, I noticed a couple of people of color on there, and one person I noticed was, who has experienced homelessness themselves, but I didn't see anybody more than affluent, well-to-do, white people who are, who don't understand the experience of many of these people that are living on the street and struggling with homelessness every day. And another thing I wanted to point out too, that almost half of the homeless population are people of color, and despite the fact that in Sacramento County, they're less than 15% of the population relatively. So, beyond just that, I want to also make clear, just to everybody in this room who's looking to get involved in this policy and council, if your idea is to, that you can make money at the same time as helping get people off the streets, you're not doing the right thing. You shouldn't be making, you shouldn't be in the business of trying to make money off of correcting a crisis that was literally, that we literally walked into by our effort and prioritization on making money. So, do the right thing, don't just look at this as a win-win situation, but actually, give it the win to the people that have been perpetually stuck on the losing end of that money in politics and money for, and profit above all else spectrum.
Thank you, Keon. Supervisor Natale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I just thank our speakers, and I think a couple of things that I take away from the comments this morning. One being, I think there's certainly plenty of room on the agenda for this council in the event that obviously, you know, receives the support here today and goes forward. here today and goes forward in its formation around any number of issues. And I do think that one of the things that caught my attention was John Foley's comments about the navigators, where we are putting significant resources into navigation services. I think, you know, certainly some critiquing, and people may have their own take on this depending upon how they're employing in their own jurisdictions about how effective it is or not, but I think, you know, as we've talked about in these chambers over time, that the navigation telling people what might be available doesn't say that it is available, doesn't get people housed, it doesn't necessarily get to those services, and so I think that ought to be a conversation right from the get-go with this policy council. I think the other thing that was, was clear here today, and maybe it goes to this discussion about the Brown Act, about having, you know, conversations that obviously where the, this policy council can, you know, have some, you know, serious reflection, but also focus on certain aspects of how we address the issue of homelessness and those who are homeless, and the challenges that are presented, whether it be budgetary or policy-wise, or practically speaking even. So, I, you know, the more I think about this today, that, you know, I don't know that it's a bad idea, Lisa spoke to it, certainly, I figure, I think it's a good idea, that one, they be sessions that be publicly noticed, you know, just putting structure to them doesn't necessarily, you know, make sure, doesn't ensure that it's going to be effective. But I do like the idea of having the voices we hear in these chambers that are heard in the city council chambers, that maybe heard in other city council chambers, not just channeled through, and again, this is certainly, I want to compliment Sacramento Steps Forward, not just channeled through there, but making sure that as those discussions amongst electeds who obviously stand for election, who are accountable to the public, all of the public, certainly get a chance to hear from people, whatever their walk in life, whatever their particular experience, but as we focus on the issue, folks that obviously have experienced it. And so, it seems to me that that needs to be part of the framework, again, not to bog down the work of this council, recognizing it may not be as frequently, obviously, as this board or other elected bodies, but I think, you know, the role needs to be one that's, you know, clearly understood, but also one that engages folks at various levels, not just professional staff or electeds, but also folks that, you know, are service providers, as well as those who may be experienced or have experienced homelessness. So, I think we ought to have some conversation around that.
Thank you, I agree. Mr. Serna.
Thank you. So, a number of speakers, I think, had some really valid points to make about wanting to understand better how the, the people that are experiencing homelessness are going to be heard, and I think it's a super, super important question. So, I'd like Lisa to come to the podium and respond to that first, and then I have some other questions and statements.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Natoli. I absolutely concur and agree with the speakers that we need to build in the lived experience as part of the policy council forum. Some of the things that we're looking at as Sacramento Steps Forward is the idea of building a lived experience council that then can be, grow and help inform some of the committee work that we are doing with the COC. So, we're already strategizing for some of our other places where we can build up more lived experience into the conversation, so it'll certainly be a very important element of what we do in terms of the policy council coming, going forward.
I appreciate that. I, you know, as, as I mentioned during our briefing last week, Lisa, that, you know, I still have a lot of angst about how much we rely on point in time as kind of the measure, the ultimate measure of the quantity and quality of the homeless challenge here in our region. I don't put a lot of stock in it because I don't believe it's accurate, number one, and I don't think the questionnaire is, it's not designed to really get at the root issue, which is a better understanding of why people become homeless, why they continue to become homeless, what do they need to get out of homelessness? And so, what I would like, or what I would hope, is that the council moving forward, we're kind of focused on a better understanding of how we're going to serve a population that, quite frankly, we don't know a whole lot about. And whether that's partnering with SAC State, because I know that on occasion, they do some more in-depth surveying of the homeless population to get at those root questions. But for me, that's going to be a really important part of me continuing to endorse the work of the council, should this board adopt it, adopt today's recommendation, because I think, again, without that understanding, we're kind of flying blind here. So, I'm happy to hear you say that there's going to be a very concerted effort in that respect. I am, I'm certainly ready to move the item. I think there's been a lot of commentary already from board members about what represents the, the appropriate complexion of this board on that council in terms of unincorporated, incorporated. And I'd like to suggest that perhaps what we consider is somehow having the two members of this board, because it is part of the recommendation to appoint today, that we have at all times a supervisor that has, in his or her district, a, you know, a substantial amount of unincorporated residents, and that we consider a rotation for the other, the other members that are representing principally a city or cities. In that way, I think you have a kind of a continual diverse reflection of the county's position and perspective as it relates to homelessness, that really is an attempt to really make sure that the council is operating with the full, with full information about what's occurring in, in our cities and in unincorporated communities.
All right. Well, with that, I will make a motion to, to approve staff recommendation with the caveat that Supervisor Serna just added. Is there a second? Well, I know, but I made a motion when she was chiming in.
Would you consider also, including the wording that only electeds are voting members, that the others are executive?
But it's not going to be a voting body. It's not a voting body, that's not the proposal.
Can we memorialize that in the report?
Yes, we can do that.
Yes, we can, yes.
Okay.
So, I'll ask again, is there a second? I understand, but I'm looking for a second, and then we can, when we have it on the table, we can then have a discussion on the motion. Right now, we don't have a motion on the table.
I would second your motion.
You got a second.
I say, I say.
We have a second. Mr. Natoli.
The, one thing that I think is important beyond representation, which is critically important, and I think in certainly how we engage folks to make sure we get, you know, a clear reflection of, you know, community voices, is, you know, how then, what's the mechanics for coming back to this board? And, you know, that really isn't here. I mean, Sacramento Steps Forward will have their, you know, respective role, this board will appoint, again, you know, the way we operate here at this board and have, you know, historically is, you know, we appoint committee members, and obviously, we have, you know, the confidence and faith that the folks we appoint from this board will represent the county, and obviously, there are issues that need to be a touchback here, that they will come back, and that's, works very well. But I guess, so, if in fact, this is now introduced into the mix, and the expectation is, because again, and I've had this conversation with Mr. Gill, that, you know, it was two years ago now that we actually had the full discussion, these chambers, on a couple of occasions, about, you know, how the county was going to be forward. We really haven't had much of a touchback. We get monthly reports, and we get engaged, and we have conversations with the county exec, and with, you know, those that are involved at the county staff level, and hear from others. So, my question is, is that what direction then is given as it relates to us getting regular, because the criticality of this issue certainly isn't, you know, overshadowed by other issues that are critical as well, but it has, it has a level of importance in our budget, certainly in, you know, the human condition. So, what's the expectation about then how this body gets regular updates as a full body, which then is still subject to a public hearing and, you know, discussion, because I think it's important, and maybe it's done once a year, maybe it's done, you know, twice a year, or it's done with our budgetary, you know, reports back, but I, and I know, Bruce, like, maybe you've got some handle on this, but I think that's, that's key beyond the appointments.
No, I think that's a very good point, Supervisor, and I think that there needs to be a commitment that we come back with report backs to this board on whatever interval you'd like to have it, not just on the workings of the homeless policy council, but if you have larger questions about the direction with homelessness, we can certainly be responsive to that. But we will provide, there will be report backs to this body on the workings of this council.
I think we need to have further conversation with SAC Step Forward, what kind of report back, whether they think in coming back. Once this is constituted, they've had a couple of meetings, I think we'll get more feedback on what kind of reports we can make, and then we can come back and put in the agenda for that.
Yeah. Again, board members can do that, but we don't have a real structure for committee report out. I think we share information.
What I mean is, once we get the input from SAC Step Forward, they give us the input, at that point, we figure out what to bring back to an agenda item.
Okay. I just want to make sure that there's a clear connection coming back through the entirety of the board, through these public forums, so that, you know, it's done in a way that doesn't put all the burden on two supervisors, whoever they might be now or in the future, but secondly, I think allows for the conversation around the very important issue that's going to have a lot of impact.
We will have to work pretty closely to the two supervisors when they feel it's time to bring this thing back.
Well, it maybe you want to, maybe you want to build it into the structure, so it's, you know, again, that, those feelings are important, but I think it maybe on some sort of a set basis with some expectation that will occur fairly regularly, not intermittently.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll keep that in mind. I think once you have a committee, we can then talk to them and then set something up.
You know, there's, there's no issue that's facing our community that is of higher importance than this, so I don't have any problem with having this brought back every time there's a meeting of the policy board. I mean, it's three times a year.
That would be fine. Again, it's a regular report back. It's not to be redundant, but I think certainly to keep the focus and the emphasis and, you know, and I'm fine with that.
Sure. Serna.
Just a question, procedural question. Do we need to nominate and appoint specifically today?
That's the request, but you can mull it over, come back a different time.
When, how time-sensitive is it that we have specific names?
I think they were mentioning first in 2020, but look at Lisa.
Yeah, I would say you have time. If you're taking action to support the policy council, that's what would be important for the rest of the jurisdictions to start their process, and then you can seat somebody in January would probably be fine.
Yeah, I think, since there's time, that might give Lisa and others a chance to, again, have one-on-one conversations with individual members of the board to gauge their interest, their availability, but I think, given the general construct of what I suggested in terms of the rotation basis, just keeping that in mind will help guide that conversation.
So, included in the motion would be that we come back with appointments at a future date?
Correct.
Okay. Supervisor Frost.
I would just like to go on record as expressing my interest in serving on the policy committee, or whatever you call it.
I wholly expected that.
You did?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I would have no problem reporting back each time.
Great. All right. So, staff understands the motion and where we're at?
Got it, yep.
All right, then, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. A very small but very important step in the right direction. Thank you. And thank you, Bruce, thank you and your staff for really
Absolutely.
...staying on top of this and looking out for the county residents. Thank you. Okay. We are now at 1:00, almost, and we have a fairly lengthy item. Mr. Gill, do you have a suggestion how we deal with that?
We could take an hour break, come back, and...
I think we should take an hour break.
And we do not have a closed session today.
Half hour?
Half hour.
We do not...
We don't have a closed session. We're going to take a half-hour break.